Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to Council Chambers. And welcome to a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Wednesday, July 16, 2003. The City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Meetings are open to the public, and we do invite you to join us. For members of the public unable to attend council meetings, we can also be viewed live on your cable station, Channel 35. We can be viewed live via webcast in the city's homepage, or heard via council phone.
Mr. President, before starting the regular agenda, there are several items to be continued. On Items One and Two, both applicants consent to a continuous to July 23.
Colleagues, request to continue Items One and Two to July 23. That would be one week from today. Seeing no objection, Items One and Two are continued.
There's also been a request to refer Item 18 back to the Housing and Community Development Committee.
There was a request to refer Item 18 back to the Committee. Seeing no objection, so ordered.
On the regular agenda, Item 26 is confirmation of a city official. It's the appointment of Mr. Alan J. Scoban to the Board of Police Commissioners. A public hearing was held in the Public Safety Committee, and a report has been distributed to all members.
Members, this is a confirmation of the Commissioner. Consideration before us, we do have a committee ruling confirming confirmation. I'd like to ask Councilmember Ms. Skalsky.
Mr. President, we all recognized yesterday that we honored Police Commissioner Chris Botman for his more than 16 years of service. And we did indicate we had someone in the batting cage waiting, ready to come out and start performing those duties well. Committee on Monday did have a hearing with Mr. Scoban. And we did have a very good discussion. I hope that you have been able to look at some of the background as we receive them on these nominees. Mr. Scoban has an incredible depth of knowledge of law enforcement. He himself is a reserve officer, although not with LAPD, but he is. So he knows what it is to be a person walking the beat. He has served in his own capacity, both in service to the department with the Police Foundation and as a Commissioner. So he's really coming in, hitting the ground, I think, very, very hard, with a lot of ability and energy to really do well here. He brought, in our discussion, a lot of information about, again, the balance, the need to really scrape through all the stuff that you read about in the papers and really get down to the essence of what's going on in the department. We grilled him quite extensively on the consent decree and his views on that. And I'm sure that as we are now looking at this appointment, and there's no question, it's one of our most important commissions, that I would forward to hearing some of the other questions that some other council members might have or comments. But perhaps at this time, I'll ask Mr. Scoban just to give us a statement, if he would like, about what he sees his role would be as a Commissioner, and what kinds of things you would look at and how you would act upon issues that would come before you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ms. Skalsky. I am very committed to the concept of civilian oversight and civilian control of law enforcement. I think that's very important in our society. And as a Commissioner upon confirmation, I intend to exercise independent judgment, to spend time looking at the facts, to look at various views, constituencies, try to make a well-reasoned decision. To my belief, that important, the commission is to identify issues, to put them on the radar screen, and monitor them, to work closely with the council, so that we can realize what I believe is our mutual goal of a safer Los Angeles, because just as the mirror is an important member of the city family, I appreciate that the commission is, we think the council is critically important. And I look forward to a very close relationship with the council. And also asking tough questions. Those of you who know my role on the Transportation Commission or bodies know that I read things carefully, I ask questions, I don't rubber stamp things, I try to think out of the box. And I would do that on this assignment. In terms of priorities of the department, I believe that probably highest on my radar screen is implementation of the consent decree. I've already spent some time with Gerald Chalif, who's the administrator in charge of that, to be sure I understood where the department is and what the challenges are. And that has a very high importance to me, because I believe that everything that's governed by the consent decree, well, has an important impact on everybody who lives in Los Angeles, who works in Los Angeles, who business in Los Angeles. It has the special significance in minority relations, in improvement of minority relations in the community that minority communities have in the department. So I place a very high importance on that, as well as frankly, everything that will come before me. And I can only promise you to use good judgment, my case, I think a lot of it is business judgment, things I've learned in 27 years having a great mentor, and that's Burbaughman, who I learn from every day, and to consider the facts and be responsible.
Mr. Scalci.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I'm in support of a friend and colleague here this morning for Alan Scoban's nomination for the Police Commission. I trust that you will do an exemplary job, obviously a huge to fill, but I think you're more than able to provide the same sort of leadership that Burbaughman has for quite some time. I've had the good fortune of traveling with you, of working with you. I think the Transportation Commission is the force, the Police Commission has gained. But I wouldn't want to let you have too easy this morning, so I do want to hear your views on a couple of things. And I appreciate your opening comment. And I think the consent decree is still a critical piece, and that gap, I appreciate what you said, still that gap between some communities and the police department, not necessarily through any lack of effort on the police department in bridging the gap, but just because, you know, to give you one anecdotal example, when Jessica Cortez, the little girl who was kidnapped from Echo Park, you know, LAPD was great, brought resources out, and really showed a lot of caring in the community. And yet, when the community knew that FBI was on the scene and LAPD, they wanted to talk to FBI and not to LAPD, because there was still that perception out there that kind of continues in certain communities that, you know, no, we can't go and talk to the police department. The one question I had has to do, and I know Mr. Weiss has spoken about this quite a bit, but on the office of Inspector General, and whether or not you have any opinion on what sort of inspector general we should have in the city, with what sort of broad powers, I know as a reserve sheriff, you've been able to see the success of that model, the Sheriff's Department, and Mr. Weiss has spoken quite eloquently about this, and I support him in that position, but want to know what sort of inspector general you think the city of Los Angeles could use and needs.
Well, thank you. Because of the staff work that I've done over the years, I do have familiarity with the office of Inspector General. And I was very heartened to see that recently the Police Commission did what I would call an expansion of the role of Inspector General, and that the Inspector General is able to become involved at an earlier stage of investigations and participate. I think that not only saves resources, but improves the quality of investigation. Also, Inspector General is well-served by now being able to be present and participate at the Use of Force Boards and what they call the Risk Management Committee. So from my perspective, and I'm also familiar with the model of the office of independent review of the Sheriff's Department, I believe it's that type of engagement that works to a very positive result. And what I've found is that the officers like that, actually, because they feel for some reason they're independently looking at it, that's a plus for them when they're trying to act responsibly.
Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall, welcome to Council Chambers, and welcome to a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Wednesday, July 16th, 2003. The City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Meetings are open to the public, and we do invite you to join us. For members of the public unable to attend council meetings, we can also be viewed live on your cable station, Channel 35. We can be viewed live via webcast in the city's homepage, or heard via council phone. Mr. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Collins, Garcetti, Gruehl, Hahn, Labange, Laddlo, Misakowski, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Smith, Vierigosa, Weiss, Zion, Padilla. Eleven members, twelve members present, and a quorum, Ms. President.
Thank you very much. The council is officially in session. First order of business, please.
Approval of minutes.
As Hahn moves, Mr. Zion seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Ms. Misakowski moves, and Mr. Garcetti seconds.
Before starting the regular agenda, Ms. President, there are several items to be continued. On Items One and Two, both applicants consent to a continuous to July 23rd.
Colleagues, request to continue Item One and Two to July 23rd. That would be one week from today. Seeing no objection, Items One and Two are continued.
There's also been a request to refer Item 18 back to the Housing and Community Development Committee.
There was a request to refer Item 18 back to the Committee. Seeing no objection, so ordered.
On the regular agenda, Item 26 is confirmation of a city official. It's the appointment of Mr. Alan J. Scoban to the Board of Police Commissioners. A public hearing was held in the Public Safety Committee, and a report has been distributed to all members.
Mr. Scoban, please come forward. Members, this is a confirmation of the Commissioner. Consideration before us, we do have a committeral recommending confirmation. I'd like first, Councilmember Misakowski.
Mr. President, we all recognized yesterday that we honored Police Commissioner Kurt Botman for his more than sixteen years of service. And we did indicate we had a, someone in the batting cage waiting, ready to come out and start performing those duties well. Committee on Monday did have a hearing with Mr. Scoban, and we did have a very good discussion. I hope that you have been able to look at some of the background as we receive them on these nominees. Mr. Scoban has an incredible depth of knowledge of law enforcement. He himself is a reserve officer, although not having, not, not with LAPD, but he is. So he knows, he knows what it is to be a person walking the beat. He has served in his own capacity, both in service to the department, with the Police Foundation, and as a Commissioner. So he's got, he's got, he's really coming in, hitting the ground, I think, very, very hard, very, with a lot of ability and energy to really do well here. He brought, in our discussion, a lot of information about, again, the balance, the need to really scrape through all the stuff that you read about in the papers, and really get down to the essence of what's going on in the department. We grilled him quite extensively on the Consent decree and his views on that. And I'm sure that as we are now looking at this appointment, and there's no question, it's one of our most important commissions, that I look forward to hearing some of the other questions that some other council members might have, or comments. But perhaps at this time, I'll ask Mr. Scoban just to give us a statement, if he would like, about what he sees his role would be as a Commissioner, and how, what kinds of things you would look at, and how you would act upon issues that would come before you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Misakowski. I am very committed to the concept of civilian oversight and civilian control of law enforcement. I think that's very important in our society. And as a Commissioner upon confirmation, I intend to exercise independent judgment, to spend time looking at the facts, to look at various views, constituencies, try to make a well-reasoned decision. To my belief, that important function of the Commissioner is to identify issues, to put them on the radar screen, and monitor them, to work closely with the Council, so that we can realize what I believe is our mutual goal of a safer Los Angeles, because just as the Mirror is an important member of the city family accomplishing that, the Commissioner is. We think the Council is critically important, and I look forward to a very close relationship with the Council. And also asking tough questions. Those of you who know my role on the Transportation Commission or other bodies know that I read things carefully, I ask questions, I don't rubber stamp things, I try to think out of the box, and I would do that on this assignment. In terms of priorities of the department, I believe that probably highest on my radar screen is implementation of the Consent decree. I've already spent some time with Gerald Chalif, who's the administrator in charge of that, to be sure I understood where the department is, and what the challenges are. And that has a very high importance to me, because I believe that everything that's governed by the Consent decree, well, has an important impact on everybody who lives in Los Angeles, who works in Los Angeles, who business in Los Angeles. It has the special significance in minority relations, in improvement of minority relations, and the confidence that minority communities have in the department. So I very place a very high importance on that, as well as frankly, everything that will come before me. And I can only promise you to use good judgment, my case, I think a lot of it's business judgment, things I've learned in twenty-seven years, having a great mentor, and that's Bert Bachmann, who I learn from every day, and to consider the facts, and be responsible.
Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I'm in support of a friend and colleague here this morning for Alan Scoban's nomination for the Police Commission. I trust, Alan, that you will do an exemplary job, obviously a huge to fill, but I think you're more than able to provide the same sort of leadership that Bert Bachmann has for quite some time. I've had the good fortune of traveling with you, of working with you. I think the Transportation Commission is the core, for the Police Commission has gained. But I wouldn't want to let you have too easy this morning, so I do want to hear your views on a couple of things. And I appreciate your opening comment, and I think that Consent decree is still a critical piece, and that gap, I appreciate, we said still that gap between some communities and the Police Department, not necessarily through any lack of effort on the Police Department in bridging the gap, but just because, you know, to give you one anecdotal example, when Jessica Cortez, the little girl who was kidnapped from Echo Park, you know, LAPD was great, brought resources out, and really showed a lot of caring in the community, and yet when the community knew that FBI was on the scene and LAPD, they wanted to talk to FBI and not to LAPD, because there was still that perception out there that kind of continues in certain communities that, you know, no, we can't go and talk to the Police Department. The one question I had has to do, and I know Mr. Weiss has spoken about this quite a bit, on the Office of Inspector General, and whether or not you have any opinion on what sort of an Inspector General we should have in the city, with what sort of broad powers. I know as a reserve sheriff, you've been able to see the success of that model, the Sheriff's Department, and Mr. Weiss has spoken quite eloquently about this, and I support him in that position, but want to know what sort of Inspector General you think the city of Los Angeles could use and needs.
Well, thank you. Because of the staff work that I've done over the years, I do have familiarity with the Office of Inspector General. And I was very heartened to see that recently the Police Commission did what I would call an expansion of the role of Inspector General, and that the Inspector General is able to become involved at an earlier stage of investigations and participate. I think that not only saves resources, but improves the quality of investigation. Also, Inspector General is well-served, but now being able to be present and participate at the Use of Force Boards, and what they call Risk Management Committee. So from my perspective, and I also familiar with the model of the Office of Independent Review of the Sheriff's Department, I believe it's that type of engagement that works to a very positive result. And what I've found is that the officers like that, actually, because they feel for some reason they're independently looking at it, that's a plus for them when they're trying to act responsibly. And I do believe that most are trying to act responsibly. So I'm very supportive of the Office of Inspector General, I'm very supportive of, if you would call it, the expansion of the involvement in the earlier stages. I think it's a good thing for the department, a good thing for the independent role of Inspector General. The other thing that I'm very aware of is that one of the powers that Inspector General has is granted by the Charter, is really pretty much whatever the Police Commission wants that Inspector General to do. And I believe in making good use of that office for the Commission to assert its independent role as the head of the department. And while I have great respect to those who have earned the ranks that they have, and full-time members of the department, they certainly have knowledge that I can't have being a part-time person, I also just have such great compassion and feelings for the independent role of civilian oversight. And I do believe that the Office of Inspector General is an extremely important component of that for the Commission.
Thank you very much. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. First, I stand to support Mr. Alan Scoban.
Thank you, sir.
I want to first say that your work in Transportation Commission is deeply appreciated. When you were the lead person to bring them to my district, District One, you showed the Chinatown community, you showed the different neighborhoods around Chinatown, how important it was for you and the Commissioners to hear what they were going through, and how the folks, the police meter, motorcycle personnel were chasing down, literally in a parade, three, four behind each other, just citing the folks in Chinatown, giving them tickets. The different tragedies recurring when we had these speeding cars coming through Chinatown, and essentially creating a danger for the seniors and the kids that are coming and going from school. There were some very profound issues in my mind that were presented, as Commissioners responded to personally. And I want to do, thank you for that. It's in that spirit that I hope we can continue working with you on the Police Commission, and I know we will, because you've demonstrated that, both in your public role, in your private role, with your businesses, your investments in Westlake, Pico Union, and these are very important, I believe, demonstrations that are real, not verbal, these are real actions that demonstrate a sense of commitment that I would wish more Commissioners would understand and do. But one quick question regarding Police Commission, the deployment issue. Looking at the crime levels, and looking where we have our personnel, can you give me just a good reaction on how you see approaching this dilemma we have? Where on the one side, parts of town feel we need a presence for prevention measures, on the other side, we have killings, we have gang violence, we have high spikes of different kinds of crime rate, and we don't have any presence. Can you give us a sense for that?
I think there are two parts to that. One is the traditional law enforcement function, and the other is the function that in long term may actually do more. And that's that, I believe all of us have to be committed to programs for all young people, particularly those who are at risk, because I believe that many of them are looking to be part of something, whether it be Law Enforcement Explorers, or LA's Best, or a sports program. I think we want to work very hard to have other alternatives so they don't go to gangs. And I think, number one, we're going to reduce some of the violence by programs to work with the young people. Number two, I don't profess to know all the answers, but in terms of deployment, it's my belief that we need to take a very close look at that, and try to respond very quickly, and then look at things such as the days and times when there's crime, and say, are we deploying to that? Because I know that the department deploys in four-hour blocks right now, so let's say it's from eight to twelve. But eight to nine might be very busy, and eleven to twelve might not be busy, yet we're maybe deploying the same during that block. This is my impression, it may be slightly different. So I think we need to look at that, see, are we changing? You know, it used to be that Fridays, Saturdays were the busiest days, well, now I understand what Fridays, Sundays are. And then just look carefully to try to maximize the resources. The other thing I believe is that we can't look for uniformed officers to do everything, and that we do need to look and see, are there certain functions that highly-trained civilians can do, so that we can maximize the sworn resources where they're needed? And finally, and I say this with the greatest sincerity, not just because Councilmember Zion and Councilmember Smith are reserve officers, but I believe it's very important for us to frankly revitalize and emphasize the importance of the reserve program. I've seen what that can mean frankly, both at San Fernando Police Department, where I started as a reserve for eight years, and at the sheriffs, where I've been for twenty-two. And one of my personal hopes is that we can really revitalize that to give it the importance that it deserves. So those are just some off-the-top-of-my-head thoughts. But one thing you can count on, when I showed an interest in your district, I was very happy being a Transportation Commissioner, and there was no thought of coming before you again for today. And I did that because it was the right thing. And you can count on me doing the right thing, because I truly do care, and I am willing to put in the effort.
Thank you, Mr. Scoban. I just want to welcome your lovely family, it's a great support system you have, and again, appreciate working with you, and look forward to this relationship to continue to develop, to address the challenges that we have ahead of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Reyes. Mr. Smith.
Thank you, members of council, Ms. President. I'm very pleased to be here to support my friend, Alan Scoban, and also a great constituent of the Trump district for this role. And I'm so happy to see Romy and the family here today, too. Alan and I go back more than just in professional role here with the city, but as friends, we went back many years, many decades, actually, we were involved in the business community together. He's been a good, solid citizen in so many things in the community. He carries on that great tradition, the Bachmann family, too. But importantly, he's an attorney, which makes him a very valuable asset, because he's a detail-oriented person. He looks beyond the cover pages and looks at the details, and that's something in the Police Commission is extremely valuable, more than probably any commission. And I'm just happy that you're there, because I know that you look at things in a different point of view. You look at the details, you want to get to the bottom line, the real story. You don't just listen to what command may tell you is the issue, but you're going to delve into the issue and find out what the real heart of the issue is, and you attack the issue accordingly. When I talked to you a couple of weeks ago, what really impressed me is, the first thing out of his mouth was, when I asked a couple of questions about issues, I asked about the response of burglar alarms, and you said to me, "I think the people of LA want us to do this." He didn't say, "Here's what the department's position is." He didn't defend the department's role. He said, "Here's what I think the people want us to do," and that was a consensus that was worked out by that task force. And I think that's a real value, that we need to have people on the Commission that understand police work, are willing to listen to command, but willing to say, "No, that's not the right answer, there's a better answer." Or the people of this city want us to do this, rather than what the department tells us, and I think that's a tremendous asset that you'll bring to us, particularly also working as a reserve officer. And I commend you, obviously, Dennis and I have the same passion. It's unfortunate you choose the wrong color to work with, you know, khaki doesn't look as good as blue, but that's a choice you made. Nonetheless, you've been a reserve officer for many years, you understand police work, nobody in the department's going to pull the wool over your eyes, you're really going to understand what you're doing there, and that's an asset that nobody really has brought to the Commission ever, that I know of, that has served in that role. And that's a tremendous asset, that you know what really goes on in the department, in the divisions, and on the streets of LA. And I just commend you, because I know you're going to do a great job, you will look out for the citizens of the city. As a reserve officer, you're going to look out for the department as well, and I'm just delighted to have you there, because I know there's going to be a seamless transfer of knowledge and information from Mr. Bachmann to you, because you did a lot of work for him, so. Alan and Romy, congratulations. Thank you for continuing to serve the people of this city, and I can't wait to get you out on the floor one of these days and see how LAPD does the job. Ms. President, and members of the council, this is one of the best appointments we've had in a very long time, and you can be very pleased with this Commissioner, and welcome to the city family again. Thank you.
Mr. Zion.
Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues. It's an honor and a pleasure to have Alan and his wife, Romy, Jeff, his son, Jennifer, his daughter, here this morning, and it's really a momentous occasion for Alan to accomplish this task, starting with the San Fernando PD, going to the Sheriff's Department, where he serves as a reserve commander, his love for law enforcement, uniquely qualified for this position. Jesse Brewer left the LAPD, became a Police Commissioner. Jesse Brewer's had that insight into the police operations, you have that insight into police operations. And I know that the relationship that we've had for many, many years, our children growing up together, our families spending time together, and our passion for helping people. I'll never forget the time on Metro Boulevard, we were traveling down Metro Boulevard, and there was a collision, where a car struck a pedestrian, and you tried to save that pedestrian, giving that pedestrian mouth-to-mouth, trying to save that pedestrian, who subsequently died. But you were there, trying to save an individual who was an innocent victim, crossing the street, struck and killed in the San Fernando Valley. And your wife, Romy, who's nearly thirty years with the San Fernando Police Department, your whole focus has been helping people. I know you've served on state commissions, I know you're on the Transportation Commission, you've done work with the County of Los Angeles, and this is really an accomplishment of a lifetime of effort, doing what's good for the people of the city of Los Angeles. You've been a good friend for all these years, and it's really a pleasure and honor to see you today. And I know you're nervous, because you're afraid what Janice Hahn is going to grill you with on the alarm issue, but Janice promised she's going to be... No, you didn't, but you'll make that promise, because we want to have this a fifteen-to-zip vote to support Alan Scoban as a new Police Commissioner, with the direction of the Police Department going in the right direction. There are concerns about discipline, there's concerns about the response time. My district has the highest response time in the city of Los Angeles, and I know you're a hands-on type of individual, you'll be a hands-on type of Commissioner. As a Transportation Commissioner, you brought your Transportation Commission to my district, where we had a meeting at West Hills Hospital, discussed transportation issues, and I know you'll do that same in your position, and with your wife and family supporting you and giving you that time, that opportunity, as Bert Bachmann has given you that time and opportunity to do the work that you do, the good for people of the community of Los Angeles. It's a real pleasure to welcome you to the LAPD family. Finally, you're going to achieve that badge of pride, that badge of the Los Angeles Police Department, the Commissioner's badge of the Los Angeles Police Department, the policymakers, the ones that make the policy. I know you're going to be welcomed at roll calls, I know you're going to be welcomed with the Protective League, and they testify to the Committee that they support this appointment. And I commend the mayor for recommending you, and all the experience you gained in working with Mr. Bachmann all those years, the knowledge, the practical application from your years in law enforcement. And I welcome you into the ranks of the city family as a Police Commissioner, one of the most prestigious and important commissions that this city has to protect the people of Los Angeles, and I know your family will continue to support you. And I just look forward to you, me, and Greg going out there and showing people what can be done, hands-on, to help the community, to help them understand that we want to make this the safest, biggest city in America. The best to you, Alan, Romy, Jennifer, Jeffrey. Thank you all.
Thank you, Councilman Zion. Mr. President, members of the council, what a love fest we have going on here for Alan.
And you brought your family, your wife, Jeff and Jenny. That's great. And you know what, everything everyone has said is exactly right, and I would say the same thing, that you clearly have an incredible track record already as a Commissioner. You have a great track record as a businessman, you have a great track record as really trying to improve the quality of life for Angelenos, not just in the valley, but I think you've really been involved in the kind of civic discourse that has improved all of Los Angeles. And I do believe the mayor has really made a good choice to sit on the Police Commissioner. I think, for me, and there are a number of issues facing Los Angeles right there, and there are a number of issues facing our Police Department, that I think you are truly the right man at the right time to help us address these issues. But I think one of the issues for me is something that Councilman Smith brought up, and that was the relationship between what the citizens need for us to do versus what the Police Department needs for us to do, versus what the elected officials need for us to do. And I think sometimes our Commissioners, who are citizen Commissioners, you are the citizen level of government that is supposed to be between all the departments in the city of Los Angeles, and the elected officials, and the people that we all serve. And I think what's been troubling for me, clearly, on one particular issue, which is the burglar alarm response policy of the Police Department, has been this sense where certainly we as a City Council, our right in the City Charter is to approve the mayor's choices for his Commissions, but what seemed to be during this debate was a real sense of the Commission not responding to the City Council, not responding to those of us who represent constituents that ultimately the Police Department serves. And while I know you probably haven't had an opportunity to completely read the compromise that the mayor's office has put forth in terms of the burglar alarm issue, and while it seems like there has been a stalemate in the past in terms of really trying to figure out something that works for the people of Los Angeles, works for the Police Department, but really is accountable to the fifteen members who are really accountable to the electorate in Los Angeles. I would hope, and I would like for you to say it on record, I know you're not going to say that you will vote for it, but what I'm asking you, Alan, is that will you have an open mind? Will you take with great sacred responsibility your role as a citizen Commissioner, who ultimately, while you're responsible for running the Police Department, you are also responsible for being accountable to the millions of people in Los Angeles who are served by the Los Angeles Police Department? I think, a little editorial here, I think it is a good compromise, I think it has taken into account a number of issues that we should have addressed anyway in the Police Department, and I hope that as a new Commissioner, you will be open-minded, you will look at it in regards to everything I just said, because otherwise, I think it's going to, it's difficult for us to approve the Commissioners, and then feel like there's no rapport with us after you're sitting in your seat, so.
What I'm about to say is what I believe, not because I feel I, it has nothing to do with how you may or may not vote, it's how I believe, because I believe one of the things I have to do as a Commissioner is be willing to speak up. What you've recited as far as the role of the Commissioner representing the community, you have it right. And as Councilman Smith stated, when he asked me about that two weeks ago, after responding to this question, that's basically what I talked about, how I felt what a role is. So I agree with you. And as far as keeping an open mind, and looking at the facts, and considering the different views, and the ramifications, is my answer, yes, that I promise to do it. But I think that's my obligation, and my responsibility as a Commissioner to do that.
Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning, Mr. Scoban. I want to begin my remarks to you by becoming for a moment Councilmember Wendy Gruehl, who is sorry that she can't be here this morning, because she's a big fan of yours. She wanted me to let you know how strongly she supports you and your upcoming service on the Police Commission. She's very excited, particularly because you're going to continue the strong tradition of valley representation on the Police Commission, and she's really looking forward to your service there. Now, she did ask me, in light of the fact that next Tuesday, there is a very significant decision that apparently will be on your agenda with respect to the burglar alarm issue, she asked me if I could ask you if you will keep an open mind for this coming Tuesday, when a certain proposal is going to be presented to you. I want to know if that is in fact your intention.
Absolutely, it is my intention.
She's made very clear, she's made very clear, her view that this is a very important issue for the San Fernando Valley, and she's made very clear her strong support for the work of the Burglar Alarm Task Force that came forward and crafted a compromise. And so it's very important to her that you go in on Tuesday and keep an open mind, that you look at all the issues, and that you listen very closely to the presentation from that task force. On behalf of her, and on behalf of my friend Ms. Hahn, but on behalf of Wendy, because she's not here, I just wanted you to know how strongly she feels about that. So can I tell her that you're going to look at it very closely and carefully?
Not only do I have an open mind on Tuesday, but I'll spend a lot of time reading the various documents that I've already put down from the Internet that the task force considered.
Good. On behalf of Ms. Gruehl, I appreciate that. Now, on behalf of myself, let me just say that I appreciate what Mr. Garcetti said earlier about my interest in the Office of the Inspector General, and I just want to take this moment to tell you, while we're formally here in open session, because we've had the chance to meet, I think you're terrific, I think you're absolutely the right man for this position for several reasons that have been stated. Let me just tell you here in public how strongly committed I am to the Office of Inspector General. And while it has been said that the Inspector General is the eyes and ears of the Police Commission, that is not a fall that the Inspector General is. And while it has been noted many times that the Inspector General works for the Police Commission, that is not the Inspector General's true client. The Inspector General works for the people of the city of Los Angeles, and in- The inspector general works for the people of the city of Los Angeles, and in my view, there is nothing that will redound to your credit more as a member of the police commission than your freeing that inspector general and ensuring that inspector general has unfettered access to the department, and the inspector general feels free at every step of the way to tell anyone in the department that the inspector general disagrees with the decision that they made. And that the inspector general feels free at any time to tell any member of the commission that the inspector general disagrees with what the commission did. It is not acceptable to have an inspector general in shackles. This is the most important reform, I think, that has been wrought in the department over the past decade. And I know you're committed to this, I just wanted you to know how strongly I feel about it. And I'd love to give you the chance to respond and just tell us a few minutes of your thoughts about how central and important a role you think the inspector general should play in continuing the process of reform in this department.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. And I'm happy to create, and I try to be brief because I recognize you've been bringing us with your time already. I do think that's a very important position within the city, within the department, and I believe that we also represent the public, and as we talked about earlier, are there as public representatives. And so I believe in making very good use of the inspector general. And in terms of the impartial, or not in terms that I am comfortable working with from the standpoint of what the inspector general does. I'm familiar with the person who holds the office, we spoke briefly. I've also taken the time to get your report that's published by the Office of Independent Review, to try to get even better understanding of exactly how they function, I'm at the office of reading that right now. But I intend to be very vigilant in this area. I can't promise exactly when or where I'd want to, but I have a lot of confidence in the role of inspector general, and I'm very looking forward to working with you and other council members as we go forward on that topic.
Thank you, Mr. Scobin. And let me just conclude, Mr. President, by saying I appreciate that you mentioned the report in the Office of Independent Review, because what Mike Genaca was done over at the LA County Sheriff's Department with the support of Sheriff Lee Baca, has turned that office from a prior, the LA County Sheriff's Department, into a model nationwide for how to do police oversight and reform. So the model for us to follow, it's not halfway around the country, it's just a couple miles away. And I've introduced legislation, we've got task forces that are working right now to try to study how to make our inspector general work like the Office of Independent Review at the LA County Sheriff's Department. I hope you join me in that process in further empowering the inspector general, so that office can be everything it was intended to be by the Christopher Commission. Thank you, Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. President, members, I also have a question from Wendy, she wanted to know who your favorite councilperson is not here in this chamber right now. They're all here, but Wendy Gruel. All right, I like that, good, good job. Alan Scobin was born at St. Joseph's Hospital in the San Fernando Valley at Burbank, and attended Birmingham High School, went to Cal State Northridge, has deep roots, which are so important for anyone who serves the city. And he's worked for a great company, for a great man, is Bert Bachmann, so I think you're greatly qualified for that. Plus, your experience in the Transportation Commission and the conferences that I have, members, is real important, because I truly believe, we talk about traffic safety all the time, forty-two thousand Americans a year are killed in traffic accidents, and the need to focus on that aspect as well as the community safety, the public safety aspect, traffic safety. Commissioner DeBees, explain some of your ideas that we spoke about, the joint committee, commission meetings, etc.
One of the things, I agree with you, there are a lot of links between transportation, traffic, and what law enforcement does that relates to public safety. And even traffic congestion has an impact on response times, we talked about earlier, and traffic accidents, what happens if there's an accident, what do people do, many people think they should leave the car there until somebody responds, and they never respond. One of the things I've already done is ask the members, my fellow members of the Transportation Commission, if they'd be willing to have a joint meeting with the police commission. They were very receptive, and the next thing I would like to do is, if you could confirm me, is ask the same question of the members of the police commission. I can tell you that two weeks ago, Wayne Tonda met with Deputy Chief Mike Kilman, the top of our traffic issues, which had not occurred prior to that level, and their fortunate close relationship, so I hope that I can act as a catalyst to have an even closer relationship between transportation and traffic and police.
I appreciate that greatly, and it's a very important thing to focus on, and that's your expertise that you bring to that area. I know you're from the great San Fernando Valley, I represent the San Fernando Valley as well as other parts of the city, and as a commissioner, you have to be concerned about the whole city. My advice to you always, or anyone who is in a role as, Ms. Hahn spoke so eloquently earlier, is to get out and listen to the people as much as you can, because sometimes when you're with a big agency, whether it's Water and Power, or whether it's the Los Angeles Police Department, or any big agency in government, sometimes you can get trapped within it, and you don't really see what's within. You must always break out, because the police department has to continue to evolve in its community-based program, to take the proper steps, to Chief Bratt has put him on, to make sure that all levels of the department are working for the interests of the public. It's so important to do that, and I know that you will, and I just wanted to encourage you and thank your family for not just this appointment to be, but for all appointments that you've held for the city of Los Angeles, and wish you well, let you know that my office and my staff will work hand-in-hand with you in any problems you have in our district. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. President. The new kid on the block, how much time do I have? Three minutes tonight, I want to try to follow the rules as much as I want. I want to join with my colleagues in congratulating you on a great, great career, and it was interesting talking to your daughter Jennifer, she said she's already read your job description, she approves it, she thinks it's an okay job for you to have, so it's good to see your family behind you. I just want to dig in on a couple of questions, and both Councilmembers Garcetti and Weiss have touched on this, but I want to take this a little bit further. It's my understanding in the Christopher Commission, police reforms that voters enacted almost a decade ago, that there was a call for subpoena powers in the office of the inspector general. Can you just move a little bit further into your understanding of what the role of the inspector general is, and whether or not subpoena powers is something you think is essential for the inspector general to have or not? And I just want to preface that with a compliment to the current Chief Bratt in moving as quickly as he can to try to instill a sense of confidence in this department with the city of L.A. All the recent chiefs have come in at difficult times, they've had to try to rise and instill that sense of confidence. But I think one of the fears, one of the concerns, is that time and time again, the public feels that we haven't got far enough, the department hasn't been able to police itself, and the only hope, the last message at home, is that in that office of inspector general, there's a fully freed-up inspector that has the ability to call in documents that may be very sensitive, so I just want to go a little bit farther on your perspective. I have to confess that I don't think I'm knowledgeable enough on all of the aspects of subpoena power of the inspector general to give an opinion. It's something that I am very willing to look at, seriously consider. What I do know about, though, is that I have a very strong belief that the inspector general has to have access to information, and it's a free and unfettered access to information in order to properly do the job. So in that context, I would be very pleased to make an issue subpoena, but again, I do not feel that I have all of the information, understand the ramifications fully to give an actual opinion. One of the things that I think is going to be really important, we touched on this just the other day, and a couple of issues that came before the council, is the morale of the department, morale of the offices. Unfortunately, we're reading every day where the commission, the chief, and the review boards appear to be in disagreement with the direction that a department recommendation has come down on the issue of discipline. What do you think can be done, and sort of what is your perspective on where the commission can go to make this disciplinary system become more streamlined, or at least not necessarily streamlined, but more in agreement with one another, where the department doesn't feel, or the commission doesn't feel that it's a revolving door, and that we're not actually getting to the heart of the issue, which in some cases may be disciplining an officer? I think at the start, in the area of morale, the fact that the Protective League took the time to come to the Public Safety Committee hearing and expect your support, which I was told was unprecedented, is an indication that they approve of what the mayor did as an appointment, of what you hopefully do today, that will have an impact. In terms of the disciplinary process, I think there's one thing that's very important to me, and I saw that when I looked at Boards of Rights and Boards of Ingrate, I saw that we have captains on there who are well-trained in most of what they do, but it appeared to me that the training that they had on conducting the Board of Rights needed to be more, because that's basically a full evidentiary hearing with tremendous ramifications. So one of the things that I'd like to see in disciplinary system is additional training for those who administer it. And I think with that training, you'll see a number of things approved that you'd be concerned about. That's, I mean, fully looking at the disciplinary system is something that I'm prepared to do, I think it's absolutely essential, but I would bet that training will be a very important part of that. But just think, if you or I were to have one day of training and then conduct a hearing of that certificates with witnesses, people representing them and evidence, I think that we probably do need to want that area. I'm going to be brief with this last one, this is kind of a long haul here, we obviously just came through a bunch of processes. I wasn't there at the time, couldn't get a chance to cast a vote, the last, at least the last two chiefs have indicated that this department needs to get up to around ten thousand officers, and in fact, I may be off for a number two on that. What do you think? What do you think can be done, given the current fiscal crisis? What can this body do, what can the city do, in your mind, to help increase support for the number of officers on the department? First of all, I would hope, and it's my belief, unless somebody tells me otherwise, that we all want the same thing there, that we all want the very best policing of the city that we can have, and part of it is going to be a commitment, which you know the mayor has, and I believe most of that all you have is to find a way to try to have more officers. But as we do that, we also have to find a way to take those who are working hard and provide them a structure in which to be more effective. And it's my belief that we can do things to be more effective, and again, that involves continuing what's done and analyzing where sworn versus civilian can do the job, analyzing things that we do, how effective we are. Streamlining, at transportation, one of the things that we focused on was the time it takes to perform certain functions, and we looked at different functions and said, gee, do we really need to do every step? Is everything that we demand or require significant to the outcome and the quality? And we found, gee, no, there are certain things that we've been doing, just because we've been doing them, and they really, we could remove them, and we could maybe do a better job for everybody involved. So in the immediate future, I would like to work with many of you, I think already doing this to a degree, and look and see how can we do a better job, and also work with you in how do we get more officers, so I think what's necessary. I'll just conclude with this, I have a great confidence in the committee process, I want to thank Cindy Miesekowski and others who spend a lot of time with you, and I've had the pleasure of working with you, but many people in the civil rights community, many people in the labor community salute your work. You're known as a policy wonk, some of it spent a lot of time, a lot of hours, working behind the scenes to prepare one of our previous commissioners, and so, Commissioner, I look forward to working with you.
Thank you, but I have to say that the previous commissioner that was giving me the honor, working with him, I learn from him every day we're together.
Mr. Villarreal. Yes, Mr. President, members, I rise in support of the appointment of Alan Scobin to the Board of Police Commissioners, and I do because I've known Alan for a number of years now, and I think that the chorus of support for Mr. Scobin speaks to his integrity, his unique experience with respect to this police department, and his commitment to continued focus on police reform. You know, Mr. Scobin had an opportunity to be before the Public Safety Committee, and while there, I was particularly impressed with his focus on a beefed-up inspector general. I agree with you that civilian oversight is critical, Mr. Scobin, and the idea that you support the need for a very effective inspector general heartens me. In addition to that, I think your support for the consent decree was also something that I found a very important attribute of yours, because from my vantage point, that is one of the biggest challenges the city is facing, complying with that consent decree so that we can go on with the business of protecting the public safety of this city. In addition, I was very heartened to know that you support the mayor and, I think, the council, in making sure that we put more police officers on the streets of Los Angeles. The idea that we should be looking more aggressively to put civilians in positions so that we can allocate police officers to the streets and to patrol is important. I'm also, you know, hoping that when you go on this commission, that you're going to look at, you know, how we've allocated some of the offices currently, some of us believe, and Mr. Zahn and I have talked about this, that we have a lot of people focused on the terrorism unit and on the consent decree, and while that is critical, we want to make sure that we get more of our officers on patrol and in the streets. So I echo the comments of my colleagues, that I'm very excited to see you on this Board of Police Commissioners.
Thank you, Councilman.
Well, I don't want to repeat everything everyone has said, and I think some very intelligent questions were asked, and I really appreciate your honesty and your response, and certainly clarifying that you're not trying to impress us as elected officials, but you're just trying to tell us the truth. And that's what I admire about you, because I do know you as a person, as a businessperson, a community member. But one thing I would like to emphasize, I'd like to thank the mayor's office for somebody of such quality, and also someone who actually is from the San Fernando Valley, someone who sleeps there, someone who shops there, someone who works there, and someone who certainly is going to represent the entire city, but you also bring that perspective that's very important. You've got good, quality people in the San Fernando Valley at every level, and you are definitely one of them. Congratulations.
Thank you, but I must confess that last night I didn't sleep that well.
Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to just say congratulations to Alan, particularly for the number of years that you've put into the police department, and we always saw the benefits of your staff work when Bert was there, and so appreciate that. I just want to give you about four things that I have an interest in, and I'm going to say them slowly so you can write them down. The issue of deployment is a very important issue, and as we debated for the last twenty-plus years, whether it's property crime versus violent crime, and we have a formula at seven forty that the city developed as a policy, and we now seem to have gone away from that, it appears that if we're going to change the policy, we change it formally as opposed to doing it incrementally. So I hope that we look at deployment and how that impacts the entire city. Also, a contingent of personnel were here yesterday to talk about the three-day work week, that report will be coming back to the council, and there's a variety of issues, and I'm sure you're aware that back in ninety-seven and ninety-six, when we studied that, many of the issues are still relevant today, that we get an objective evaluation and not look at the surface issues. And then on the issue of consent decree, we're talking about fifty to a hundred million dollar investment, over three hundred people involved with dealing with the consent decree and a computer system that might run somewhere in the neighborhood of fifty million dollars, and that system is very important that we get that done within the five-year period, but that we also use common sense as it relates to if we have more people watching less people in the street, that we make a common sense decision about deployments and where the priorities are for the community. Because we have not run into a victim yet that was happy that an audit was done on time, but the police didn't get there on time. And so I'd like to make sure we have that balance. And then the fourth one is the burglar alarms. The issue is almost a universal decision or discussion in the eight districts, of people being upset about that decision of no response. In fact, the general statement that's made is that not only do we send the message to the criminal that it's okay to burglarize, but you can take your time, and so that is something that is of great concern, and we hope that that task force that came forward with the recommendations, that those recommendations be taken seriously. The other issue I'd just like to comment on briefly is the issue of inspector general, and many people have tried to make it well beyond what the public... and many people have tried to make it well beyond what the public has voted on. And I hope that you have the strength to look at the charter, look at what the citizens of L.A. voted overwhelmingly as to that position, and that the commission has been deemed to be the public servants that supervise, that direct that position, has the subpoena powers, has the ability to give that task to the Inspector General. And then, when we make comparisons as to other organizations in our county as it relates to they have the model program, we need to only go back a month or two, go about articles in which thousands of complaints were not done, done late. And also, as you know, monitoring LAPD the last 20 years, the most replicated system in the United States about police discipline is the LAPD. So, I think we need to look at it from both sides and the balance, and not take it down past that we have no return, but really have that level of balance and understand the issues from the community standpoint and the activist standpoint, because our primary goal is providing better service to the community, and we have been on many journeys over the last 20 to 30 years that have not taken us to the promised land. And I would hope that we would keep in mind that the public service is our number-one issue.
Thank you. I noticed, and I, you know, those are important issues, and some of which we've discussed over the years. And I can only promise you to use my best to keep it over mine as to work hard. Thank you.
Mr. Zine for a second time.
I just wanted to have the last word to call the question.
Thank you.
No, 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 no. I haven't had a chance to speak. No, just quickly, I think it's all been said already, Alan. You and I have known each other for a couple of years now, and this is a tremendous opportunity for you, but a tremendous opportunity for the city as well. As much as has been said about you being there as Bert's right hand, as I mentioned yesterday about the fact that it took his life, you've been his right hand in business, you've been his right hand in politics, you've been his right hand in the community throughout the San Fernando Valley, and you've been his right hand as he has deliberated and learned the police issues and made those tough decisions. You've been there maybe in a quiet way and in a silent way, but you've certainly been there. And that makes you arguably one of the most prepared members to join the police commission in this city's history. And so, I commend you. I think the city's lucky it has you, and I have no doubt that you've been served well. And before I open the votes, would you care to introduce your family?
Thank you very much. That's one thing I was thinking about, and I appreciate you asking me to, because as was said earlier, and you know that I couldn't do this without the support of a wonderful family who make it possible. And I'd like to introduce my wife of 25 years, Romi, who has been deployed for 30 years, 29 years, for the San Fernando Police Department where we met. And Romi was born in Cuba and came here at the age of 16, and I'm very proud of her and that part of my family. Our son, Jeff, who's 23 years old, who graduated from SC last year and is working in the city. Jeff. And my daughter Jennifer, who's 21, who is out of the city during the school year in Chicago, Northwestern, but will be moving back here once she graduates a year. And I love them very much, and I thank them. I want to publicly thank them. We can really thank your family for their support and their love and allowing me to do this. Thank you for that opportunity.
Thank you. Now, we're ready for a vote. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll and confirmation. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
Sound the alarm. Mr. Scoban has been confirmed.
Thank you very much.
For quick, please. Mr. Clerk, next item.
Items three through 25, with the exception of 18, has already been acted on, are items for which public hearings have been held.
Members, items three through 25 now before us. Public hearings have been held. A motion from the floor would be required to reopen the public hearings. Seeing no such motion, members wishing to call any specials, items three through 25. Seeing none. Mr. Clerk, before anybody looks, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
Those items are approved. Next items, please.
Items 27 through 42 are items for which public hearings have not been held.
Members, items 27 through 42 now before us. Let's call item 39 special at the request of the chair. On the bounce of the items, I do have parts in item 38, so let's call that item special. On the others, I do not have parts from the public requesting to address this council. I believe we shall have the public hearings open and closed. Members wishing to call any specials. 27 through 42. Ms. Miesekowski moves item 31. Seeing no request for specials, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
Those items are approved. Next items, please.
Items 43 through 49 are the closed session items. Do you wish to hold those on the desk?
Hold closed session items on the desk.
On the continuation agenda, items 50 and 51 are items for which public hearings have not been held.
And I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council, items 50 or 51, that were satisfying the public hearings. Members wishing to call either of these special. Mr. White.
Fifty-one.
Ms. Miesekowski.
I ask that 51 be taken out of order. We do have people here from both Lawa and the TSA.
Okay. Item 51 is called special, and colleagues, this is a possible closed session item. I believe we'll begin the discussion consideration of this matter in open session, and at the advice of the city attorney, enter into closed session if necessary. 51 called special. We saw item 50 before us. Members wishing to call item 50 special. If not, then, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll on item 50. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
That is approved. Mr. Labange.
Mr. President, I apologize. I missed when you moved so rapidly after that appointment of the new commissioner. Item number 15, I wanted to call special, please.
Item 15, then, we need a motion for reconsideration. Mr. Labange moves. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll and reconsideration of item 15. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
Okay. Item 15 is reconsidered and called special by Mr. Labange. And colleagues, we've also received the request to take item 51 out of order without objection, but begin with item 51.
This is a for with on item 50, please.
For with on item 50. Let's begin with the staff report on item 51.
Good morning, members of the council. My name is Paul Green. I'm the chief operating officer of Los Angeles World Airports. We're very pleased with me today. I have Captain Bernard Wilson, who runs our police department at LAX, and I have the acting federal security director, Larry Fetters, with us this morning. We're very pleased to be here to talk about two very important issues that recently have raised their heads at the airport. Number one is the issue of the screening of the employees that are employed by the TSA during passenger screening, and the difficulties that we have had with some background checks. The second issue that we would like to discuss has to do with the service levels as a result of the staffing that currently exists at the airport. What I'd like to do, if it meets with your approval, is break those into two. We'll take the issue of passenger screening first, and I'd like to ask Captain Wilson to take you through what has transpired there, what the issue is, and what action has been taken to resolve that problem. So, Bernard.
I'm Bernard Wilson, Chief of Airport Police for Los Angeles International Airport. Mr. President, members of the council, the City of Los Angeles Department of Airports is required to conduct fingerprint-based criminal history records checks on persons applying for access to secured areas of our airports. As a parcel of that process, we had instructions from the, at first, the Federal Aviation Administration, and later from the Transportation Security Administration that allowed us, in fact, even required us to exempt employees of the Transportation Security Administration from this process. We had a, something that came to our attention in January of this year by kind of a fluke. We had several TSA employees who were printed anyway. And when the results came back, we noticed that they had disqualifying criminal convictions on their criminal history. What caused me some concern was that we actually looked at five people that we had fingerprinted, and all five of those five people came back with disqualifying crimes. The concern comes about because those people had supposedly been through an exhaustive background check before being hired by the federal government, and the background check was supposed to include the same criminal history records check that we had conducted. My first reaction to that was to approach, first of all, with a brief Lawa executive staff, with the note we had the issue, but second of all, to go to the federal security director at the time, Admiral David Stone, advise him of the problem, and I made some recommendations that the Transportation Security Administration might want to consider redoing the background checks, at least doing that part of the background check that included the fingerprint-based criminal history records check. We also offered to assist the Transportation Security Administration in doing this if they needed our help. Over a period of several weeks, we had a number of discussions with the TSA about this problem. TSA's initial reaction was they realized there was a problem immediately. Their initial reaction was to consent to doing an additional fingerprint check along with a review of those results. However, my understanding is there was some discussion between the local TSA people and TSA headquarters back in Washington, and perhaps the current FSD, Larry Fetters, can address that when he speaks. But we eventually got the concurrence of the TSA to conduct these checks. We have been doing fingerprint criminal history checks now on all the TSA passenger screeners, the same as we do for any other employees that come out of the airport. And we have printed somewhere in the vicinity of 2,000, over 2,000 of these TSA screener employees. We have had to reconcile somewhere in the vicinity of 400 of them that came back with some information indicating we had to look a little further, and we have had some disqualifications of these TSA screeners. Where we stand now is all the TSA passenger screeners at LAX have been printed, they have gone through the review process. We're still waiting for the results, for a handful of the fingerprint results to come back. We haven't got those yet, but we're working very closely with the TSA to make sure that all the new hires go through the process, and we review the results at the airport police badging office to make sure that the standards are met as far as what the federal law says for disqualifying crimes.
Yes, Mr. President and members of the council, my name is Larry Fetters. I'm the acting federal security director for the Transportation Security Agency at Los Angeles International Airport. I agree with everything that Chief Wilson has brought to your attention. I'd like to add my personal comments to put this in perspective. From September through the 31st of December of 2002, the Transportation Security Administration at Los Angeles International Airport hired approximately 2,850 screeners to screen baggage and passengers. The TSA was exempt from undergoing a local background check by virtue of the assumption that the HR processes in Washington were vigorous, and all of the people who were working for the TSA would have undergone, and of course, they eventually did undergo, a thorough, multifaceted background investigation exercised by TSA HR and the Office of Personnel Management and the FBI in Washington, D.C. During that same period of time, the TSA on a national basis was hiring as many as 5,000 people per week, and ultimately had a population throughout the United States of some 55,000 to 60,000 employees. As Chief Wilson mentioned, in January, February timeframe, he brought to my attention and to Admiral Stone's attention that they had re-badged some of our people through a re-badging process, and had come up with disqualifying backgrounds, or what at least appeared to be disqualifying backgrounds, at about the same time due to some internal administrative, internal affairs types of investigations that I conducted with our workforce. We'd come to the same conclusion, that some people have slipped through the system. So, Chief Wilson and the local Transportation Security Administration agreed that we needed to have an insurance policy in place, namely have all of our people submit to the fingerprint-based background investigation by the airport police department. We dealt with our headquarters. There was some hesitation initially to give us the green light to move forward, and I believe that the thought in Washington was, why do you want to do that? We've already done backgrounds on all of your people. It took a couple of attempts to convince them that probably not everybody has been done. So, about the time that Chief Wilson and his employees started fingerprinting and conducting criminal history background checks on our TSA employees, the Transportation Security Administration lit the rocket on our own background processes, which admittedly were slow coming out of the gate. As it turns out, the system had not been completed in a timely fashion, and that's why in January of 2003, the airport police and TSA discovered that there were people who were unsuitable for work at LAX and at TSA, actually in the workforce present on a daily basis. So, as partners, we joined in this effort. We reignited the TSA system, re-fingerprinted over 1,000 people for TSA, filed out over 1,000 supplemental applications for our local employees to get the background system in place in Washington, and also sent our screeners over to the airport police department for local fingerprint checks. The results have been good in that we have continued, both the TSA and LAX airport police have found the people who did not need to be there, and there are some 180 people that between the TSA and LAX we determined had unsuitable backgrounds, not all criminal history related. We find people unsuitable for work backgrounds, and of course, the airport is looking just at criminal backgrounds, and we look at criminal history backgrounds as well as work background, residential backgrounds, and what I have to say about the character of our employees. But in total, we have disqualified 180 people on various background issues. The bottom line, again, is that the TSA admittedly was slow to complete its background processes. In a perfect world, those backgrounds would have been completed prior to anyone going to work at LAX or any other of the 429 airports throughout America, but apparently, they were not completed. But once it was brought to our attention, and once we discovered internally that we had people that needed some additional attention, we put in place a remedy within Transportation Security Administration and with the L.A. airport police. And to this day, we have a vigorous process in place. We believe we have found all of the people who are suspect, and we have removed them from the workplace. We also have a process in place that will ensure that a local review continues as an insurance policy, because as you'll hear later in my testimony, we are about to go through another round of hiring here happening at LAX and TSA, but we need to make sure we don't repeat these same errors that were made in the past. Thank you.
Questions on that issue? We'd be happy to address. Mr. White.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to first thank the folks at the table, first the folks from LAX for doing your due diligence, our due diligence, and discovering these problems. And then, I also want to particularly commend Director Fetters, not just for the forthright invitation he gave us, but just for the fact that you're here today. You don't have to be here. You're a Fed, you're part of the TSA, and we appreciate the fact that you decided of your own volition to come here and to make clear what your agency had done wrong, and what you're trying to do to correct it in the future, because I'm sure you felt the way I did when you learned about this. I mean, it's shocking to think that anyone with a criminal history, or anyone with any sort of unsuitable history, would be serving as a personal or baggage screener at the airport, because they're not just the first line of defense against hijacking or bombing. Those people are almost literally the only line of defense. The computers don't work on their own, the machines don't work on their own, they all rely on people. And to think that people with those sorts of histories were safeguarding not just all of us in Los Angeles, but indeed the entire nation, was just extraordinary. It was shocking, and I appreciate that you've taken steps to see this doesn't happen again. There's some discrepancy in terms of the numbers, and I'm just wondering, while you're all free to table, can you just give us a set of numbers that you all agree upon in terms of criminal histories, other unsuitable histories? in terms of criminal histories, other unsuitable histories, badges that have been revoked, people that have been terminated? Because there have been various sets of numbers. I just want to get a solid set of numbers. Hold my time while they do that.
Okay, Mr. Fetters will do that.
Let me put my figures out on the table, and Chief Wilson may have more current figures. Literally, our staff meet on a daily basis to find out where we're at in this process. I mentioned earlier that we have 180 people who have been disqualified from employment at LAX for the Transportation Security Administration. 153 of those were discovered through exclusively the TSA process. 27 were discovered through the LAX process. And in total, 180, but it's a combination. I have to be honest. I can't break out in pure numbers, the number who were disqualified for a criminal history issue versus some other aspect of improper application for employment. But the other issue that ties into that is that there were a number of people who worked for the TSA who for one reason or another did not show up to undergo the fingerprint examination at the airport police headquarters. I believe the number was as high as 251 at one time. And that is for a variety of reasons. Some of the reasons are good and we're proud of. Some of them we're not very proud of. Some of the reasons included the fact that a number of people, up to 20 at one time, were serving an active duty in the military. They had been activated for the Iraqi war and remained on active duty, so they were not available to go. Others were scofflaws, people who were off administrative leave, being processed for disciplines or had gone AWOL or were on long-term workers' comp status. And on several occasions, some people had taken extended unpaid leave because they were about to bear children. We have reduced that number of outstanding badges, which started out at 251, to 128 or 29 this morning. We'll have to get our figures straight. By process of TSA withholding final paychecks, writing correspondence to these people who had not turned in their badges correctly, and making telephonic content. And that's been within two weeks. We've reduced it from about 251 to 128. The next initiative that we will take is to go out and knock on doors to recover these badges. And then I think you'll find that Chief Wilson has even further initiatives lined up to recover those badges. But that is where we get back to the LA Times, the 285 or whatever it is. It's a combination of the disqualifications and the badges that had not been recovered that needed to be recovered. And before I go to Chief Wilson for a numerical update, just to make sure we're absolutely clear, those 100 to 200 people, some of the people that you're referring to, they held what sorts of positions? They were screeners, which means they were magnetometer screeners, they were... They were passenger screeners and baggage screeners, which are the two types of screening that we do.
Gotcha. And Chief, in terms of the numbers, is there anything else that you should put on the table to make sure we have the best possible number?
Before I mention the numbers, one point I'd like to emphasize is that the badges that have been invalidated have been deactivated. They're no longer useful to gain access to security areas. About the most that a person could do would be to stand in line and get screened, same as if someone was holding a ticket. So we are concerned about getting them back, but they currently do not allow any access.
You mean there are people out there who still have LAX badges?
Yes, that's what the ones we were talking about, the ones we're trying to recover now.
Trying to recover, okay. Continue with the numbers.
What we did was we deactivated approximately 245 of those when the people did not show up for printing. And as Mr. Fetters just said, we need to get those back because there's a variety of reasons why we didn't get them back. These are people who are on military leave, on maternity leave, on administrative leave, pending discharge, a number of things. One half of those have come back in the last two weeks. We're actively and aggressively pursuing getting the remainder back to us. As far as the numbers for who were actually disqualified, we had a total of 38 people who were going through the disqualification process that had what looked like disqualifying crimes.
Say the number again, I'm sorry?
38, sir.
Okay.
The number, the law provides that the employee has to be able to have a chance to correct the record if there's a mistake in the record. And so during this 30-day period when they're allowed to go out and do that, we expect them to bring in documents. We also try and verify their convictions with the courts. 19 of those people were flat-out disqualified because they in fact had disqualifying crimes, disqualifying criminal histories. The other 19 of the 38 ended up withdrawing from the process. They either quit their jobs, or they just did not report back to us in that 30-day time period. And those badges were also deactivated, and as far as I know, they're no longer employed by TSA.
And so I'm just trying to understand, you've got 38 total that came through the LAX process, and Chief Fetters seemed to have 27?
No, I wouldn't amend my statement. What I was referring to earlier gets a little confusing depending on how you count the figures. The 27 were people who were disqualified based on information exclusively coming from LAX. 38 were referred over to us for further review. And some of those are the difference between 27 and 38 or in some form of review. When we get a referral from the airport police, we place these people on administrative leave, take their badge away from them, and then we go through the process of resolving what the situation is that's been brought to our attention. If it's a flat-out disqualifying criminal conviction, or if there's outright deception on any of the forms, Chief Wilson's forms show an admission to a crime, our forms show that he denied a crime, we administratively process them for termination immediately.
And am I correct that part of the reason that this happened and then that it was uncovered was that LAX on its own suispronte decided to undertake examinations of the backgrounds of TSA employees? And what you've told me, Chief Fetters, is that generally speaking, TSA disfavors that nationally?
The TSA as a government agency can be exempted from local background examinations. When we first came to LAX, we felt that the TSA as a government agency would conduct timely backgrounds, as I did. And of course, we took that exemption from local screening, our local background examination. As it turned out, we were not up on our backgrounds, and that's why we had to reignite the backgrounds locally or re-initiate them when we realized that we were in rears. And the quickest way to do it would be to work with LAX, in our opinion. And it turned out to be a very good process where we have two agencies kind of competing with each other, but in a positive sense, to find out who can find the bad guys first.
That's good as far as LAX goes. What that raises is even a more troubling issue nationwide. I mean, if 20-plus months after September 11th, TSA, and it's not your responsibility, sir, you just started with TSA, but if 20-plus months following September 11th, this is going on at TSA in Los Angeles, and it's only through the fortuity of LAX being extra vigilant that it's discovered here in Los Angeles, I hope alarm bells are going off at headquarters and throughout the country and ensuring that we have multiple levels of background screening for TSA employees at other airports, major and not so major, throughout the country. Because if not, it sounds to me, if we're just relying on TSA's background checks throughout the rest of the country, the evidence we have right here suggests we're in trouble. And so I hope that someone, somewhere is paying attention in other cities. We don't have the potential to affect what goes on in other cities, except to bring some public attention to the fact that this has happened here and hopefully, in other parts of the country, they're going to take action to make sure it doesn't happen there.
Mr. Weiss, I can assure you, speaking on behalf of TSA, that what we have done here at LAX has been replicated at every airport throughout the country. When we did go to headquarters and prove to them that we had people who had not been properly backgrounded here at LAX, they did not take the approach that, oh, that's an anomaly at LAX. They turned on the system throughout the entire United States. And I can fortatively tell you that this has the personal attention of Admiral Loy. I speak to his office two or three times a week about this issue. And I know for a fact that at every airport throughout the country, they are giving the matter the same attention. And I can guarantee you that every single TSA employee at Los Angeles International Airport has completed a Transportation Security Administration background examination, which consists of three distinct parts and is very comprehensive.
Chair recognizes Mr. Kowski, to be followed by Mr. Zine and Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too want to thank Chief Fetters and Chief Wilson. And members, we call Chief Fetters Chief Fetters because he was a career Los Angeles Police Department member who did retire after a long career as deputy chief. He was hired by the first TSA administrator in Los Angeles, Admiral David Stone, to assist him on security. And I complimented Admiral Stone when I talked to him and met with him at the airport because I thought that Chief Fetters, because of his experience in Los Angeles with the police department, would be a perfect fit to intermit the federal level with, not only at Los Angeles Police Department, but clearly, the Los Angeles Airport Police and Chief Wilson. And I think what we're hearing today is that because of cooperation, because of partnership, they did uncover what was not an anomaly, but uncovered something that needed to be dealt with seriously. And clearly, they did deal with it seriously here. And again, I think LAX and LALA deserve praise because when I was at the airport as last December, early as last December, and they had increased and met the TSA test of having baggage security machines that are now there that get tested and checked, LAX was the first airport in the country of its size to achieve that. And I think it achieves that because of the relationship between TSA and the airport police in particular, and LALA. It's not always easy. Obviously, any institution which is institutional and has its own security and its own police always feels that it's the way it does things, it knows better. And yet, we are under federal mandate now with the new system being imposed on top of that. It can only work, and it can only work well here and obviously, work well across the country, in the kind of partnership that is demonstrated here, the willingness to come together as is demonstrated here. And the ability, literally as they say, to talk to each other practically in each other's office more than two or three times a day works. And I think, I want to compliment all of the agencies who are represented here today because that is the process by which a situation was uncovered, a situation where diligence was applied on both sides, and a situation where sharing that information to ensure the safety and quality of security at LAX was dealt with. Mr. Weiss, you, there was an interesting question raised when we talked about the deactivation of the badges, which occurs immediately when someone leaves that employer, is not going to be there for a period of time. But the badges are still out there. You know, it's interesting. We have the same situation here. We have a lot of city employees who are no longer city employees and know a lot of our security codes around here. And that's not even a bad thing. You push a button, and we haven't changed those codes. So it just points out that security needs ongoing vigilance and concern in terms of updating and upgrading when there are a number of people who have access to systems that perhaps ought not to anymore. But in any case, I too want to compliment TSA, LALA, and the airport police for being here, being diligent, and giving us the facts and the details and indicating that this is an ongoing partnership that as other situations arise, hopefully, they will just be anomalies in the future. But whatever arises, it's going to be this team that deals with it together. So thank you. Yes, Mr. Green?
I just wondered quickly if I might, if it's broken, raise the second issue that was questioned, and that's the service levels. What is the impact of this attrition that's taken place at the airport on service levels at LAX? Earlier this year, matter of fact, in the spring, we met with TSA and established a staffing level to meet our needs this summer at approximately 2,700 employees. Because of the problems that has been discussed this morning, as well as normal attrition, that number is down, I believe, somewhere below 2,200, and raises some real concerns on our part about the level of service out there. I'm very pleased to report that there's some new initiatives that the TSA has to address that problem, and I'll let Larry comment on that at this point.
Yes, thank you very much. We have had severe attrition at LAX. Over 500 people have left the workplace for one reason or another, including this ugly background situation. And we are at a staffing level that is well below what we are authorized. We're making up for that in two ways. We have authorized an incredible amount of overtime, which is compensating short staffing. And we've also introduced some unique protocols that are well within the standard operating procedure of the TSA that tend to expedite the flow of passengers without creating any security risks. But more importantly, just as I drove in here today, I was contacted by my direct report in Washington to reaffirm that we will be hiring up to 600 new screeners here at LAX starting on August 7th. So that will be in the process of giving us the staff that we need to keep the airport moving at an expeditious flow. I might also add that despite the short staffing and the need to use overtime, we have made great progress on processing passengers, and our wait times are significantly down to where they were a month ago, where we did seem to be hitting some crisis levels on wait times.
Thank you.
Mr. Zine?
Thank you, Mr. President. That old saying that Congressmen, Brad Sherman always says, "We can't trust the federal government. Who can you trust?" In this particular case, we trust our local jurisdiction to handle the problem. I was a drug testing program. And there's a random drug testing on the applicants.
The answer to both questions is yes. We have a random drug testing program that was just introduced within the last 30 days. As well as screening at the entry. And on the inspection of baggage. I recently traveled. They took my bag and they inspected it, etc. Are those folks screened in different leagues than the TSA people? Are they all the same?
All TSA employees, all TSA employees have the same screening process applied to them. And then what security check maintains that integrity when they do the baggage check, but you can't lock your baggage anymore? And you may have valuables in there. Other than that individual? Is there any type of to verify that that one individual has been watching what they're doing? Is it videotaped or something? So when you end up here mentioning something you've missing?
Where to go? Some of the activity is videotaped, but not all of it is videotaped. We also have supervisors and managers and managers in the terminals. All of the hours that these supervisors have been sitting on tables. And I think Chief Wilson will indicate that he has some sub-rosal programs that also observe activity in the terminals.
So when you see someone in TSA uniform, in my particular case, I'm in the line to check my luggage, and the TSA representative is going to take your luggage over here and inspect it. And I said, "Can I watch?" They said, "No, we can do this without you watching." Which creates suspicion in my mind, who's watching, not if there is anything valuable in there, but if there was something valuable in there? I can understand when you're going through the S train and you're there watching, but when they remove that and we don't have that security check or some type of mechanism, there's been reports of people saying something was removed from luggage.
Absolutely. We have had allegations of that. The difficulty with those allegations is that, yes, there's an opportunity for TSA employees possibly to get something out of a bag because we do open a certain percentage of bags that are armed. But other airline employees, baggage handlers behind the wall, also handle those bags. Also an exposure. I might add that the reason at LAX that we have the barricades around the SUV-sized baggage screening machines and do not allow you to enter that area to observe the process is that, number one, it's congested. But we have those barricades and barriers there as a safety measure because we have found that some people, in particular, can get involved with that equipment, and it could be deadly. Ultimately, none of us will ever see our baggage screen because the airport, LAX in particular, but across the nation, the process is moving towards inline baggage screening where it'll be no different than it was prior to our current baggage screening. You'll check in at the counter. They will take your bag across the counter. It'll go on the bag belt and disappear behind the wall. And then there's a totally automated system with human interaction, of course, that will process those bags. So you won't be able to wash your bag and get screened back there either. And that's where we're ultimately going with technology.
And is the federal government aware of the concerns of the travelers? I was missing.
Oh, absolutely. We have a consumer complaint hotline. We have complaint forms available on all of our airports. And we have an office of the youngest person in Washington who hears complaints from passengers, all those employees. And again, interestingly enough, I was talking... And again, interestingly enough, I was talking to the Ombuds person this morning before I came down here about an incident where there wasn't alleged, there was damage to some luggage, and the individual was not happy about it, probably didn't involve LAX because the plane emanated out of Chicago, but nonetheless, he was complaining in LAX.
And just off the top of my question, when someone is terminated, is there an appeal process they have? And if there is that case, how many of them have been reinstated?
There is a limited appeal process, and the appeal, because these are our proprietary federal employees, is limited to a civil rights violation. During the first year there, and I notice with the federal government, these employees are at-will employees, and once you're gone, you're gone, unless you can come up with some type of a civil rights angle on how you're discriminated against in that process. However, the process that we have at LAX and at all other airports is one, a screener is about to be terminated, they are removed from the line, their badge is taken away, and a package is put together that comes to me, and I have to sign off on that package, saying, yeah, this is probably a cause for terminating the employee. And we have all the things that you and I have seen over the years, councilperson assaults, all that stuff goes on time and time, but not in great numbers, but the same type of behavior. And then that goes to our Human Resources Office in Washington, who again reviews the package, and then communicates to me whether I have met their standards, or whether I have failed, and some other penalty must be applied. And that applies in all types of complaints, above a three-day suspension. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. I'm very happy to see Chief Fetter's on the job there. He comes with many years of LAPD experience, and I know where he ends there. And I thank you for really clarifying a lot of this issue. I really have a question for Chief Wilson, which is another issue with terrorist possibilities. A number of months ago at the Van Nuys Airport, there was a man running around supposedly on the airport with a rifle. A constituent of ours and a business person who rests from the airport approached one of your officers and said, what's going on in this copal place, what's happening? And was told basically, really don't know what's going on, LAPD's got something at the other end of the airport, we can't talk to them. And I called your office, and was told by a lieutenant, I'm sorry, I'm not going to give you that information. Couldn't write you a last year question, which I thought was inappropriate to begin with. But secondly, it raised a great concern of mine, is that problem communication between airport police and LAPD?
First of all, I apologize on behalf of the airport department, but Lieutenant told you, I just want to clarify something. I'm actually not in charge of the airport police at Van Nuys Airport, at least not currently. There were some discussions about placing them under my jurisdiction very shortly, but this is something that I'm not familiar with, that particular incident I'm not familiar with. As far as the compatibility of communications equipment, at LAX, all the police officers deployed at LAX operate on the same radio frequencies, that's LAPD officers plus airport police officers. We all dispatch to the same frequency system, and we're all talking to the same dispatchers. At the, at Van Nuys Airport, there is a program currently in place to equip them with Astro radios that will have LAPD frequencies on them, so they can do exactly what you're asking about. They'll be able to communicate directly car-to-car officer to officer with the LAPD counterparts. That's been in progress now for about six weeks, it's a matter of being the equipment person, and getting it up there.
If I might comment on the issues that we're discussing this morning, we really have to primary to LAX, of course, but I can assure everybody that we have not ignored the situation at Van Nuys. Since 9/11, we have added a number of officers to our workforce out there. We are upgrading our perimeter screening. We're working very closely with the tenants to tighten up our procedures and our security processes, and there's absolutely no reason in the world why we can't be talking LAPD out there, as Bernie indicated. There is a, we just completed, we're in the process of completing a consultant review of our police organization, and I think ultimately the end result of that is going to be, we're going to fold Van Nuys up under direct control of the LAX.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Councilmember Cardenas.
I don't have any specific questions at this time, but what I would like to see happen is we note in file this report, that we're doing on a report, but at the same time, I'd like to know if it's within your means or ability to give a quarterly report to the Commerce Committee here on the Council level.
Certainly, we can do that. Absolutely.
And also, based on the testimony that I was hearing earlier, and unfortunately, what we heard about what Jack Weiss is bringing to light, is the fact that here at LAX, we were able to improve our security system and go above and beyond the national mandate, Jack and I are definitely going to be working on something to make sure that we try to get the attention of Washington, so that we don't put our passengers in jeopardy here in Los Angeles, because in other jurisdictions, they're not tightening up their security either. So I appreciate your efforts, and I know, and what I heard you express today is we have a long way to go, and that you're trying to do it and do that as quickly and efficiently as possible. So I commend you for that, but the reason for the quarterly report is to make sure that we can help you in any way that we can, whether it's us talking to Washington, or whatever it is that we have to do here to make sure that we're able to do the job that we want to do, at the level that we need to provide safety for our passengers here in Los Angeles. Thank you.
We'd be delighted to brief you quarterly. We'd be delighted to do that.
Councilmember Laban.
Appreciate all your testimony this morning, and again, Larry Feathers, good to see you again, and thank you for your work for the city of Los Angeles over the years. The concern I had, as you said, there's an office in Washington that handles complaints. And one thing I like, if there's a matter that's of a complaint that a citizen or a traveling public, wherever they will be from, and I know it's not this issue that we're talking about, I thought it was terrible, that woman from the Netherlands who came to a promised land of Southern California for her, I think, 50th birthday, and only to be turned around for 14 days because of some mess-up. I don't know if Phil DePoyen is still here from the Department of Airports, but you probably could ask, answer this question here. Is there a local office that we could have, that if someone is upset, and also for the worker, "I'm upset, I want to see your boss," the fellow says, and you could say, okay, Paul Washington. Well, that doesn't work, but if you say, over at 19, 16 and 1/2 Aviation or whatever the address is, boom, you go right and you see somebody. What is the local aspect of that?
For the TSA, any local complaints are made either to my office or to the customer service representative, which is a euphemism for complaints and trying to improve our customer service. And I mentioned the Washington complaint simply because this individual felt that he had a financial claim, and that's the way you get it into the system for review for reimbursement. But my local customer service representative has talked to that individual.
Good, okay, yeah, just like having to go to the city clerk's office, we got a claim, you got to go to that desk.
Exactly, exactly.
I understand that, okay, but I want a local office, which you have, because there is some frustration for people, whether they work at a place or if they're traveling through a place, especially a public place where people may demand that. And so I just want to make sure that's there, and I want to thank you and wish you well. And after the last question I wanted to ask, how much internationally do you talk with your colleagues in, say, Hong Kong, or Frankfurt, or in London, or wherever it is, in Israel, wherever there's the air traffic and traveling? Because I remember when I was 24 years old, arriving and seeing 18-year-old soldiers on the tarmac in Frankfurt with big guns, and I said, God, this is a different world over here. But there was a time in the late 70s when the Redford Grade was operating quite effectively in France and Italy and Germany. And now, this has all changed, we expect this.
Yes, the international scene is actually handled by a separate office within Transportation Security Administration called, oddly enough, International Operations. They have that responsibility for liaising with foreign governments, foreign airports, foreign carriers, and we have a group of people called Principal Security Investigators and Inspectors, and they each have assignments for airlines on a worldwide basis, and they work with those airlines. So we're working with the foreign governments, the foreign airports, and the foreign airlines, and we actually have people who are stationed permanently abroad.
And we are also doing that as well, just to throw that in. The International Association of Airport and Seaport Police was formed in 1969. We're one of the founding members, and last month, we hosted the International Conference here in Los Angeles. So we have a first-name basis relationship, telephonic relationship with our counterparts around the world, also across the country, the airport law enforcement agencies network. Our communication with the other airport counterparts is pretty much instantaneous.
Good, I appreciate that. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Laban. That concludes the councilmembers who pressed their button to speak. So we now have the matter before us to note and file with the amendment that Councilwoman Cardenas brought in to ask for a quarterly report from LALA on the security issues at LAX with TSA. So that is now before us. Members, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote. 14 eyes. Thank you, and again, thank you to Chief Fetter's, Chief Wilson, and such a great representative present this to us today. Members, we've now had a request to take item 39 out of order, so if there is no objection, item 39 is before us. We recognize Councilmember Padilla.
Thank you, Madam Chair colleagues. This is item 39 from today's agenda, which as public alike you know, is the proposed new committee structure that I introduced last week along with, Councilmember Zakowski was absent, but Councilmember Garcetti signed on to it as well. And I just wanted to briefly walk you through, I think most of you are familiar with the proposed structure, has some, just very few but significant changes to the structure we've had for the last two years, but I think it better accommodates our priorities and how we do business in the next two years. First of all, we are creating a new committee called Convention Tourism, the Entertainment Industry and Business Enterprise Committee, to really capture conventions, tourism, travel to Los Angeles, Los Angeles being a truly international city, and we need to keep ourselves on that international map. We're all familiar with the issues that we've dealt with over the last couple of years as it relates to convention center business, or whether people are traveling to Los Angeles for business, or people are traveling to Los Angeles for pleasure. All of this has changed since 9/11, and it's such an important industry, economic, otherwise for Los Angeles, this is a new committee that can really focus on those issues and keep Los Angeles on that worldwide map. We talked about the entertainment industry in here, not only for local reasons, like keeping film shoots and production locally, but the entertainment industry and other significant and unique business sectors as one of the larger attractions of people around the country and around the world to Los Angeles. So that's a committee that we propose to create to accommodate this new committee. We have called for the merger of what has previously been known as the Housing Committee, Development Committee, and the Economic Development and Employment Committee, for a couple of reasons, not just to make room for a new committee, but because internally the city's processes are such that there's a lot of intermingling between the procedures on economic development issues and the procedures on the housing issues, particularly as it relates to applying for and the receiving and implementation of federal grants. So it makes a lot of sense for efficiency purposes for those two functions to be housed in the same committee. And I think from a policy perspective, it makes all the sense in the world for the same group of people who are deciding where people live to decide where people work, as we, not to step on the toes of transportation or planning, but make those significant issues. Another change in the committee structure that I think most people are happy with is the decentralization of the intergovernmental relations function. Previously, it's been housed in the Rules Committee. I propose that we sort of decentralize it, so I think the best way to explain it is by example, if we have a resolution that calls for support of state legislation on gun control, as opposed to it coming to the Rules Committee, it should go to the Public Safety Committee. If it's transportation-related, it'll go to the Transportation Committee. If it's, you know, you follow what I'm saying. It's assigned to committees by policy matter, not just simply an IGR function, but one brief or one quick technical amendment under the Rules and Elections Committee description and scope of jurisdictions, I want to alter the last sentence to read, "And intergovernmental relations on all matters, not in the purview of any other committee." So if there's subjects matters that we wish to take into account that don't match the policy of the policy committees, those matters will be referred to the Rules and Elections Committee. Another change, a small change, it was an oversight really, Committee F, we went back to the old name of it, as was proposed two years ago, inadvertently, that should remain the Education and Neighborhoods Committee, not the Neighborhoods and Schools Committee. And finally, just to call your attention to the new name of what was formed with the Arts Health and Humanities Committee, the Arts, Parks, Health, and Aging Committee, to really better reflect for the public to understand what that committee really is charged with and focuses priority time with. So I think that's just a quick summary of the changes we're proposing. Nothing too, too major, other than this new committee that we're creating and the changes subsequent that should accommodate this change. Ask for your support, and if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them. But as many of you know, this is a product of the conversations that we've had collectively, trying to capture people's interests, people's experiences, people's priorities, and everybody's input into how our committee should be structured to take care of business for the next couple of years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Padilla. Mr. Ludlow.
Members, Mr. President, I just want to rise and commend our President Padilla on his leadership and wisdom in terms of making some of the recommended changes in this committee structure. He noted a couple, obviously, the creation of a new committee that can begin to focus the city on perhaps additional revenue opportunities. He also referred to the combining of Housing, Community, and Economic Development, which I think arguably makes a lot of sense and takes us back to where we were some time ago. But then, obviously, for each member of the council to have the opportunity to serve, in essence, as our own liaison to the respective government bodies, which we may have to interact with on given issues, I think it was a smart call, and I would encourage members to support this. And I just want to commend our council president and his leadership to pull these two committees together. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ludlow. Anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing none, this matter with the new committee structure and names is before us.
Madam President, just for clarification, on the Neighborhoods and Schools change to Education Neighborhoods, that was letter I.
All right. With that technical correction re-announced, we now have the matter before us. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote. 14 eyes. That matter is approved. We'll send that forthwith. Next item, I believe, is 15, that was called special by Mr. Laban. Mr. Laban, item 15.
Madam President, thank you very much. I have Glenn Britzer here from the Los Angeles Unified School District Board of Education. Also, Ali Najee is here for the community, and I don't know if anyone else is in the public hearing.
The public hearing, I think, was held in committee, but to take a motion to reopen it, but those were.
Okay, that's all right. There were no motions to reopen it, but I got three minutes, right? So I can give any of my three minutes to these gentlemen, right? Okay. So let me have Glenn Britzer give us a little report. Members of council, separate from any other issue that we have talked about recently about Tom Bradley, the Los Angeles Unified School District is building many high schools in this city, and I truly believe that they should name a high school after Tom Bradley. Tom Bradley opened the doors to this city hall, once elected in 1973. Tom Bradley worked passionately with all people of this city. Education was a big part of his program. He, although born in Texas, grew up and went to Jefferson High School, I believe, if I have my memory correct on that, and I think he would really be an appropriate role model for people to know about Tom Bradley, who he was and what he did for the city. And I'm going to ask Glenn Britzer on my two minutes and 19 seconds to give a little brief for this.
Members of the council, Glenn Britzer, Special Assistant to the Superintendent at LAUSD, and I just wanted to explain a little bit about our naming process. First of all, it's an excellent suggestion by Councilman Laban to name a high school after Tom Bradley. As you can see, on something that may have been handed out to you, we're currently building 10 or 11 high schools in the city of Los Angeles, which would take two of those 19 seconds to say is great progress on behalf of the district, who after not having built a high school since 1971. Many of these are under construction right now, today, you can actually see steel in the air. I also just wanted to say real briefly that we do have an extensive naming process to figure out what the high schools should be named with the community involvement, and this body certainly is aware of the importance of a community process in terms of naming different things, but input from elected officials is very important to that. Sometimes these schools open without their name officially chosen, so the process is something that we undertake as soon as we get a principal on board. The principal comes on board about a year before a school opens. Principal comes on board about a year before a school opens. However, elected officials and the input from elected officials is an absolute part of that process, and as is input from community members, neighborhood councils, principals, parents, a wide variety of people. So just wanted to explain to you that there is a process that goes, gets undertaken, but clearly a suggestion, and the full ways of the council behind it carries great importance, and we appreciate the effort on behalf of every time. The efforts that everything you do on behalf of L A U S D. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Britzer. Najee Ali, I got fifty seconds left.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Laban. Mr. President, members of the council, on behalf of my nonprofit Project Limicope, as well as being appointed the President of the George Pritchard Fan Club by Chief Parks, we believe this motion is an exit motion, and we fully support the naming of a Tom Bradley High School in Los Angeles. He was a great man, a great role model for this city. This is a fitting tribute. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. President. Members, I know Wendy Gruhl, who's not here, Ed Reyes, and Wendy, I know you speak passionately about this, about the youth council that I was on a little earlier, and Tom Bradley, again, involved many people in the process of government. Some people may have questions about this, but there's no question that this fan would be a role model for all students who would go to that school one day. And it's true, as Mr. Britzer spoke, a high school has not been built in this city since Eric Garcetti has been born. And now, for all those years passed, how long have you, thirty-one years, Ed? Thirty-two. So you're the Rhodes Scholar, I get that. Thirty-two years. Now we've got a high school, there's multiple high schools, there's a great opportunity to name after a great man who served this city well. Thank you, Mr. President. I ask for an eye vote.
Mr. Weiss. Mr. Ludlow.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to rise in support of the report. If you're wondering why that report from Mr. Britzer was so brilliant, so well put together, and so thoughtful, it was because it was done under the watchful eye of his wife, Lisa Britzer, who's Cindy Miskowski's chief of staff. So that was the reason, that was a great report. Rise and support.
Other members wishing to be heard, item fifteen. Seeing none, Mr. Cook, please open the roll. Please close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please. Forthwith, item fifteen.
Item thirty-eight, called special, and as much as there are cards in the public.
Item thirty-eight now before us, and we do have several speakers card. Council calls forward Larry Green, followed by Ed Turley, Howard Euler, I learned that yesterday, and Hector Marroquín. Mr. Parks?
At the Housing Committee, we dealt with this issue of funding for the programs that deal with the intervention of gangs. And I believe today we have Unity One, No Guns, Central Recovery, and Toblerone. I hope I didn't miss anybody. But they're here because, as we debated and discussed this issue in the committee, it became very clear that it's very essential process and programs that are in the community for prevention. And we're spending something, neighborhood two point five million dollars on prevention and intervention, but yet, when we made the comparison, and Mr. Garcetti made it very clear, we're spending one point something billion dollars on the enforcement arm of law enforcement. And as we sat there and tried to debate and discuss what program and funding, it became clear that there's not enough funding to deal with the issue. And rather than try to split hairs and figure out how much of the two point six billion dollars should go to which program, we really needed to expand the pot and not to eliminate any of these programs. So that's what the motion was set up for. Number eighteen today went back to committee, which basically is waiting for this consideration for funding. And I think that the people here today will express clearly what they're doing and how they're impacting the community. And it's really one of the few prevention intervention programs we've invested in, along with L A Best and L A Bridges. This is something that I think is very important, that we consider a way to find additional funds.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. And with that, we are required to conduct a public hearing on this item today. Larry Green, followed by the other speakers that have announced, and we'll call more as time goes on. Go ahead.
Good morning. Oh, wait a minute, it's two hours into the meeting. I mean, good afternoon. First of all, let me say, I've been out of town. Congratulations to Antonio Villarosa. I'm glad you're on this body. It's disgraceful we should have to wait two hours for this to be discussed. You spent about forty-five minutes confirming a guy that could have been confirmed in two minutes, and then you took things out of order. I guess people in the L A airports are more important than getting money for gangs. I live in Hollywood. There's nothing more important than the gang problem in the city of L A. It's disgraceful that they should have to be waiting two hours. And if you hadn't taken this thing out of order, if you'd gone out of order one more, you might have had to have the police carry me out of here. This is very important. I'm going to give up the rest of my time to the others, and I ran down here, took the revlon, writing a book now, so I had to take a writing break. I'll talk more in public comment, but this thing should pass. No questions asked. But don't take forty-five minutes. I'd like to get back to writing, back in Hollywood. Thank you.
Thank you. Ed Turley, followed by Howard Euler, Hector Marroquín, and Oscar Garcia.
Mr. President, all of our members of the council, thank you for this opportunity to address you today. I'm here to speak in support of Councilman Parks' motion. I've been involved in gang intervention for over twenty years. I'm a native of Southern California and South Los Angeles. One of the problems that we face every day in the community is finding enough resources to deal with the problems that seems as though no one wants to put dollars in to really In the last ten years, there have been seven thousand gang-related murders in Los Angeles County. The majority of those have occurred in the city of Los Angeles, south of the Santa Monica Freeway. The majority of those victims are African-American males and Latino males between the ages of fourteen and thirty years old. Our problem is not an African-American problem, it's not a Latino problem, it's the city of Los Angeles problem, it's an American problem. And so we urge all the city council members to support this legislation, but also to go beyond the one million dollars that is recommended. There's two point eight million dollars citywide to deal with this problem that is a multi-billion dollar problem. There are very few organizations that are even willing to work with at-risk youth and young adults, the target population that we target. And those dollars have us fighting among one another because of the competitive process to do something that not many people are willing to do. And so we urge you to go beyond the one million dollars, certainly supportive, but know consciously that we must do more as a city. This is the birthplace of L A street gangs as we know them today in America, and it should be the genesis of the ending of the wholesale murder that occurs on our streets every single day.
Thank you, sir.
We seem to take it up as though it is just a fact of life that is not going to go away. And while there's always been violence in our society, there's one particular violence that I believe that we can end with enough resources, and that's gang violence. So with that, I thank you, and I urge your support for this motion.
Thank you very much. Howard Euler?
Good morning again. I spoke here yesterday, I'm back today. I'm not a council gat fly, I'm not a council watch hack. I'm coming here today to talk about a problem that was as important as what I talked about yesterday, and that's Bridges Two. I'm speaking today on behalf of the Unity Collaborative. That collaborative is not mentioned in the transmittal that you all have received from C D D. They'll be correcting that, I'm sure. But we are a collaborative of seven organizations, cutting across all ethnic lines. We can work with every gang there is. We do work with every kind of gang there is. My own organization, for instance, in the harbor, works with both Crips, Bloods, and Latino gangs. Cut across it very easily. Hector is here from Unity, I mean, from No Guns, and he's here with Mustafa from Unity Two, Mustafa Fletcher, and they cut across all the gang lines and ethnic lines in collaboration. The issue is, the issue for gangs is the lack of resources. Plain and simple. That's it. Chief Parks, right on the money, when he says we've got to put more resources into it. And so we're here to support that motion. I have three major grants coming into the organization I direct in San Pedro, Toblerone Settlement House. Bridges One, Bridges Two, and F D N. We get good reviews on all three of those. I'm just ecstatic about all three programs, but nothing, nothing is more important than C D D funding for the future and the present of this city than Bridges Two funding. And it is the most seriously underfunded program. I have about a million four coming into my organization. More than half of that goes to collaborative partners for what we do. All of us, all of us are concerned about the lack of resources for Bridges Two. You have a chance today to make a major step in correcting that. Thank you for the consideration.
Hector Marroquín and Oscar Garcia from No Guns will be our final speakers.
Hello, my name is Hector Marroquín, the director of No Guns. I just want to thank all of the city council right here for listening to us. I'm not too good of a speaker, so I apologize, you know, if I can't express myself, but in reality, I had to speak because, you know, I was staying quite too long. Bottom line is, you know, these are the guys that are actually with No Guns. Could you guys get up so they can see me? Actually, these are the guys that, we got them, we recruited these guys from the streets, and they're from different neighborhoods through the whole seat of L A. We got them in the Union Local Three Hundred, they're working, making minimum of twelve dollars an hour. No Guns been existed since nineteen ninety-six, and we're out there trying to do a good job and try to, you know, rest our lives, trying to change the lives around and, you know, reduce the violence in the streets. I have a question to all city council that, I've been working in South Central on Eighth District, and Ninth District, and the Tenth District. We got forty thousand dollars a year, the first year, the second year, we got sixty. No disrespect to any organization, because, you know what, in reality, they're doing a very good job. My respect to C R D P, Toblerone, and Unity Two. Like they were saying, yeah, they need additional money. And I believe on that, and I respect that. But we need an additional money for Latino representation in South L A. With all respect, Black has about a million and something for gang intervention, where Latino only has sixty for the last two years. Maybe city council doesn't know that, and like I said, I'm not trying to step on nobody's toes, I'm not trying to take their money, because they do need money, they do do a good job. But I wish that city council would recognize that Latinos, there is the same problems in Latino communities as much as in Black. And I would like you guys to please kind of consider that when you guys are trying to get additional money for Latino representation in South L A, or the whole seat of L A.
Thank you very much.
God bless you all. Take care. Thank you very much.
How you doing? Good afternoon, ladies and committee. I'm here speaking on behalf of an organization that hired me. Made you guys to see diverse types of people here. You know, we all come from rough backgrounds, and we're all trying to just have a job in order to stay off the streets, be a productive member of society. In order to do that, we need the help from you guys, the proper funding in order to keep us going. I mean, you know, that's what it basically boils down to. We're all trying to be good people here, be productive, but without adequate funding, I don't see how this organization can keep on moving forward. That's basically it. It's like, hopefully you guys can take a look and see that we're trying to be better people ourselves, take that into consideration, and make your best judgment. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. This concludes public comment on this item. Turning now to council discussion. Chair recognizes Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. And I want to thank everybody who's come down here on this issue, both for their patience, also for their passion, and for their courage. I also want to praise Councilmember Parks when we had the discussion in council committee, and one of the things that we talked about, we need a larger pie so that we're not all fighting over such a small pie in the first place. Councilmember Parks immediately put that into action. I was about to second his motion, and I hope that this is a start, not an end, of where we have to be. I also want to give praise to the folks that are here, too, because it's tough enough when we ask some of our young people in the city not to join a gang, not to have a life of crime. And if they do not, they are heroes. But to go a step beyond that and then go and do the intervention work, which you actually put yourself in the way of bullets, between guns, where you say to folks, put down your guns, do not kill each other, that's going beyond being a hero. You're truly angels, as Tom Laban would say in the City of Angels. Folks who go out there, and I want to first praise that work. We have, and we asked for, in our L A Bridges program, and we have two aspects of it, obviously, L A Bridges One, but today we're looking at L A Bridges Two, those folks that do the direct intervention work. And we have released, or shortly to be released, this L A Bridges Two Evaluation Report. I think we'll probably see a newspaper article about it tomorrow, we'll see some press about it, and a lot of people are going to be looking at criticizing the intervention efforts that we have. Let me tell you what this report says. What it says, and just reading it quickly this morning, is that we need to have clear goals in what we want to achieve with the money that we're spending. It says that we have to have clear definitions as well, what those goals are, and how we should function. Organizations like yours, we as the city as well. It also says we have to have better coordination with the community where appropriate. But I don't want to see the criticisms and any places where there's room for improvement. This report says, of course, there's room for improvement, but to be an excuse for us to back off our commitment to intervening in our communities. I don't want us to see any of the suggestions of where we can do better become an excuse for us to turn our heads away and walk away from the violence and the killings in our communities and in our neighborhoods. So I hope that this jumping off point, when we look at this million dollars that we can find in some place, and God knows we need to find it, because when you look at how much we spend on suppression of gang violence in the city, and abruptly, if you say we have one point five billion dollars that we're spending on policing, and the largest amount of time in policing is spent on gang violence, and we spend only two, less than three million dollars on gang intervention and prevention, we are spending less than a penny on the dollar trying to stop the problem, less than a half a penny on the dollar trying to stop the problem. And that is horrific. We need to make sure this million dollars is spent the right way, and I'd like to add a friendly amendment to Mr. Parks' motion, if it's all right, that we spent twenty-five percent of this money, if we're able to find it, providing one of the suggestions in here, which is going directly to staff development to make sure that our outcomes are being achieved. One of the things this report says is that despite crime going down, where you're doing your good work, gang violence and gang murders have gone up. I don't believe that's because you failed. I believe it's because you're fighting against a tide which is too strong to fight with less than three million dollars in a city like this. So what we need to ask is for greater accountability, and to give you the help, as you have said when this report was done, you want and you need to be able to do your work. But anybody who's willing to put themselves in front of a bullet needs our support and our help, not walking away from them. So thank you for that work. Thank you, Councilmember Parks, for your leadership on that. I stand in strong support, and I hope that we can find this million dollar, Godspeed. Thank you.
Ms. Hunt?
I think I'd like to make sure that if we're going to make a part of it administrative, that we make that on the growth side, not the net side. I think we need a million dollars out in the field, and that we find administrative money. If we cut down the millions to seven hundred and fifty thousand, I think we do far less out of the community. But I do agree, we need the administrative part.
And with that, it may seem to have been referred back to the committee. I believe that's the best place to approve that and incorporate that into the program. Ms. Hunt?
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I just rise in support of Councilman Parks' motion. It was actually a great moment in our committee last week, when we were spending a lot of time debating the actual dollars that were going to the individual vendors and contractors, and there was some dispute and debate on the allocation and how dollars went to run. and there was some dispute and debate on the allocation and how dollars went to one vendor and not to another. It was a great breakthrough when Councilman Parks said, look, we need to find another million dollars to support gang intervention in the streets of the City of Los Angeles. And the entire committee room broke into applause and it was actually the right thing to do. What you should know, Dave, by this motion is, of course, we're not giving a million dollars, we're trying to identify a million dollars. And I think that's what we're all standing in support of. But I really do hope that we as a city can identify an extra million dollars to support gang intervention. You know, when I read every day in the papers that we're spending close to a billion dollars a week to sustain our troops in Iraq and to rebuild that country, I can't help but feel that we as a city have to do everything we can to find an extra million dollars to finally get some peace on the streets of our city and help rebuild our city and rebuild the lives that are torn apart every day by gang violence. So you need to know that, I believe this council, you will see today by our vote, that we are very supportive of what you're doing. What you're doing is extremely important. We do have a gang problem in Los Angeles. It's the worst that it's ever been. Our own chief of police has said that we need a comprehensive plan to address gang violence in the City of Los Angeles. But part of that is certainly gang intervention, part of that is gang prevention. As you know, I'm a big believer in trying to keep our kids from joining gangs in the first place. But nevertheless, you're out there in the streets every day, you're helping to stem the tide of gang violence. And there's going to be a report that comes out that everyone's going to read, L.A. Times is going to do an article about it, and it's going to try to point out shortcomings, it's going to point out concerns and issues in the whole gang intervention process. It may say that gang violence is actually going up in certain areas where you're out there working, but I don't think we should take that, Councilman Garcetti, I agree with what you said, we shouldn't take that as a reason to back down. We shouldn't take that as a reason to remove funds or pull funds from what you're doing because what price is there to the guns that aren't being shot, to the people that are not being stabbed, to the lives that have not been killed? I mean, we don't know those statistics always. We don't know the piece that you're actually brokering on a daily basis. Those are the things that never make it in the paper. What makes it in the paper are the crime statistics. So know that we're supportive of what you're doing, we believe in what you're doing and I welcome you in the streets of Los Angeles, I welcome you particularly in my own 15th district, where I know you do great work. And I know I'm over, but there's nothing wrong with gadflies, Melrose, Larry Green. We appreciate our council gadflies. And you know what I must say? It has been, well, it's 12:30, but I venture to say, it's not always a bad thing to sit through a council meeting. It's not always a bad thing for you to see what city government does on a daily basis and how that impacts your lives and how that impacts what you do. So I think if you interviewed them, they would not find it to have been such a bad experience to be here and watch us do our jobs on a daily basis. Anyway, thanks for being here.
Ms. Perry.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. And I wanted to highlight a few things that Hector said because I was able to participate in conversation with Hector and Ed at the back of the room and to highlight for those listening and those watching that they are working together, Hector, Ed, Unity One, they're all working for the same common goal, which is to help people reclaim their lives. And the best way for the city to express its appreciation and demonstrate its support is not only to find more money, but to provide the technical assistance to enable these community-based organizations who really are on the front lines of intervention and strengthening relationships and giving people an option because they're living the option out there every day. We need to, as a city, make sure that not just put the money there, but to make sure we provide the assistance so that the organizations will thrive, will grow, and will survive, and that we can track results and support them in a positive and supportive way, not in a punitive way, but in a supportive way. Because the last thing that we need to do as a city is to create a situation where now we put our community-based organizations in a situation where they're competing against each other for diminishing resources when people's lives are at stake. That's not something that would be acceptable. So I want to make sure that a strong component of this program is to make sure that the city is providing the technical assistance that it needs to provide to help these groups do their job. Thank you.
Mr. Zine.
Mr. President, colleagues, I have a question for staff. Do we have staff on this matter? I know that the issue is serious in South Los Angeles, east part of the city. We also have serious problems in the San Fernando Valley. We read in the paper daily how we're having shootings, how we've got gang injunctions in areas including the West San Fernando Valley. The allocation of the funds for Bridges One, Bridges Two, what percent does the San Fernando Valley receive, whether it be the Foothill Division, the West Valley Division, the Van Nuys North Hollywood, Devonshire?
John Chavez with the Community Development Department. Councilman, it's about 17% of the 2.8 million dollar budget for gang intervention.
For the San Fernando Valley?
Yes.
And if additional money is allocated, what will go to the San Fernando Valley, if any?
We would be among, the methodology that we use was based on gang-related crime. So our argument was that we would put the money where the highest gang-related crime was. So that was our initial methodology. We would look at that as well. We're also looking at poverty, geographic also, because we know the San Fernando Valley is a large area as well. So we would look at a methodology and we'd report back to council before we move forward with any additional funding or any additional allocations of new funds.
And I want to acknowledge what was mentioned, Union Local 300 hiring. We can invest a ton of money in gang prevention, in gang intervention, but if we can't find jobs for these people and an opportunity for that American dream, and if we see the representation, if they're all working and they're very patient, they're understanding the process, how many unions, how many businesses are participating? While the intervention is one aspect, how successful are we getting these people employed, getting them into a productive workforce?
Currently, the department is looking at all its resources. We have workforce centers scattered throughout the city. They will be taking on that, their primary responsibility would be to assist gang intervention clients get a job. As a matter of fact, last month, we had training for the gang intervention contractors and workforce contractors on getting second chances for ex-attenders. We recognize it's a very, very big problem to get somebody with a felony conviction into a job. It's not easy, but each workforce center would have a second chance coordinator to assist people that have convictions get a job. And that will be in the contracts. And actually, the workforce centers are setting aside specific number of slots to help gang intervention clients.
And with some of the city projects, I know we're building libraries, we're building one on Sherwood Way in Nova Park, we're building a new West Valley Police Station, we're building a number of other city structures. Is there any connection to bring through Bridges individuals who are trying to get their lives together, for those contractors, to employ them on those projects that cities pay for through bonds?
We will pursue that. In the past, I think No Guns has been working out in Playa Vista for construction jobs. They do actually, and I think CIS, Communities and Schools in the Valley, has been referring gang, ex-gang members to public works, projects, or even those that are privately funded for that kind of, those kinds of experiences. We'll continue to, we'll pursue that as a strategy.
And in my time remaining, about a minute, Bridges has been around how long?
Since 1996.
Okay. And it seems like we're still trying to develop a program by this point, and the millions that have been spent, we need to have some positive influence instead of a negative article, which may appear in the newspaper condemning the program. They need to get the program moving forward so we can get these people into the workforce, we can get them gainful jobs, make them part of the productive society, which obviously they want to do. But just investing millions and millions and millions of dollars in intervention, I've been to Sutter School where you have an operation, I was impressed with it, but that's a short-term solution to the overall problem, whether it's South Los Angeles or San Fernando Valley. If we can't get them into some type of employment, continuing in construction, or whatever the case may be, then it's just going to keep on going their merry-go-round. And by this time, we need to have something solid and agenda if we want to include in bonds those construction projects, because we have all kinds of criteria when people do work for the city of Los Angeles, that they would have to utilize some of the individuals who are qualified to work in those jobs so they can get off the rolls and get onto the payroll and be a productive member, buy a car, buy a house, whatever the American dream is for them. But it seems that it's short-sighted. I can understand the million dollars and I support that. But I look at the other parts of the city that are saying, let's further this, let's get these opportunities. They get in construction, construction never ends. The Congress will continue with that. Can I get a response to that? Then I'll finish.
Yes, Councilman Zine, for this year, we will make it a client-centered program. That is, we want to come back and our commitment to you this year, we will come back to council and say, we have this many gang, ex-gang members in jobs, education, and training. That's our mantra. We recognize the need to be able to come back and show you real results, right? And that will be our commitment to you. We will report back on that. Thank you.
Mr. Fudlo.
I just wanted to encourage, to move this forward, I think going back to the spirit of Larry Green, I would encourage all members to vote. I'd like to move a question.
Mr. Reyes.
Thank you. A couple of points. We were building the Staples Center. Put together a one-stop hiring program, coordinated with community development-related organizations, and we were able to put together a comprehensive approach that dealt with hiring people. My understanding today is that we have resources, programs, and I see things like tattoo removal, dealing with support programs, allow individuals to be employable. Are we thinking in those terms that leverage are existing, programs we funded to address these kinds of support systems? Have we thought about that and how we connect with the L.A. Bridges?
Yes, Councilman, that's the connection with the workforce centers, which is funded in far greater amounts than the L.A. Bridges program in total. As I mentioned before, that integration between the Bridges contractors and the workforce centers and actually carving out slots for gang intervention clients to go in there and to get the kind of training and support services. Some of these guys need, you know, something as simple as boots to go to work, and that's the kind of support that would be available through the workforce centers. As a department, that is our commitment to integrate the millions of dollars that we have in CDD and really leverage that with the general-funded Bridges program.
Do you have anything that deals with tattoo removal?
Yes, yes, we do. It's actually part of their contractual requirement is to refer people for tattoo removal services, and we've actually explored conversations with the adopter in Beverly Hills who's willing to provide those services for our contractors. But that's actually something that they should be doing now, getting somebody prepared for a job and definitely getting the tattoos removed is an important part of that process.
How many benefit from that program, do you know?
From the tattoo removal? No, I don't have a number. We can get that because they're supposed to be referring them to those types of services.
Just one more matter in the context of the discussion, the observation that was made that Latino groups in South L.A. are getting disproportionate funds, and there's no way we're talking about taking away money from existing. But is there an infrastructure that can help support Latino focus on gang issues in South L.A.? Do we have that kind of involvement going on? How are you dealing with that?
The Unity Collaborative that just spoke is made up of a number of community-based organizations that represent all parts of the city. No Guns is a member of that collaborative. And they do, they do face funding, they have a disparity in funding that we, if we get additional funding, would consider trying to beef up those kinds of contracts. We recognize that there are parts of South Los Angeles that have changed dramatically in the last 10 years and what were historically African-American communities have now changed. And so we know that that's a problem. We will, we will be addressing that. One of the, one of the challenges is to maybe look at any new funding and see if there are initiatives like serving the African-American-Latino conflict and maybe adding some more money to those types of initiatives.
Last question. The role of unions and how they participate in these communities. Has there been a dialogue or connectivity with the unions, talking about opportunities and stewardships and mentors and role models for those who want to get into the different areas of the workforce? Have we engaged the unions in this at all?
From the Bridges side, no, not directly. I think that's a good opportunity for us. I know on the workforce side that there's the healthcare initiatives and such, and reaching out to the unions to get their clients placed in there. If we put our gang members in the workforce centers, they would benefit from those types of relationships that are being fostered right now with the workforce centers. I think in Bridges, we do definitely need to make those kinds of overtures to unions and see if we can get gang intervention clients into unions.
I understand the position program, the position that should be part of that system. And we should leverage every opportunity. Every time we pass a project, like in Century City and Consumer Wise, there's a big project on that board. Many unions are going to be involved with it, many opportunities, sharing the wealth would be an ideal situation. That's one example of many projects. We review a club that talks about city participation and intensifying, identifying the labor force, especially including this sector that has grown up, complementing it with tattoo removal, organic skills. Those are the kinds of substantive elements that we should be adding.
A great point well taken. We will pursue that. Mr. Cárdenas.
Prevention, in my opinion, is smart on crime. I think all too often we see people saying that we need to just incarcerate people, we just need to punish, punish. But yet, at the same time, statistics show that if you do not turn a teenager around, we're going to spend, we, the taxpayer dollar is going to come to the tune of $2.3 million to just say, we're going to finally put this little one away forever. That's what we do in this country, and it's wrong and it's unfortunate. I fought in Sacramento to get prevention into California at a level that is respectable, something where we're going to make a difference. With that, we were able to get $120 million a year, basically, for intervention and prevention. But that's nothing because we in California are spending $5 billion to feed our incarceration system here in California. And that's sad. It's a shame because that is money that we're throwing away, but more importantly, we're throwing away lives. And prevention is what I consider to be smart on crime. Prevention is where the rubber meets the road and No Guns or whatever the program is, Communities and Schools, those are the programs that are going to get our children off the street and it's going to be, make the difference between not only our children, but the entire community. Because when somebody commits a crime, there's a victim. When somebody commits a crime, the whole family's a victim. So the one thing that I want to bring to this discussion is this simple fact, I said it a couple of days ago and a few days ago, I'll say it again. The community, the city and county of Los Angeles is now receiving juvenile justice funding every year for the last three years, over $30 million. And the City of Los Angeles isn't getting its fair share. There's a misconception that the county of Los Angeles, that is their money, it is not their money. It is state funding and you as a CBO, as well as the City of Los Angeles, can partner up and get that money and be at the table. But you have to get it out of your head that the chief probation officer is the one who's in charge of that money and that the L.A. County supervisors are in charge of that money. They are not. It is state funded and we have not been getting our fair share. And I commit to you that I'm going to do what I can to make sure that we go to Washington, we go to Sacramento, and we look locally to be creative, not only to find a million dollars, but to find more. Because it is appalling to think that when we prove that prevention programs can cost us $500 on the low end per year, per child, all the way up to maybe $15,000, the most comprehensive programs we have in California, only $15,000, and we're wasting $42,000 a year to incarcerate our juveniles and $30,000 a year to incarcerate our adults. That's just wrong, it's stupid, it doesn't make sense. But together, we need to be the voice of reason and responsibility to make sure that these programs work. My father was a local 300 laborer. My father was a local 300 laborer, and he was the one who taught me not to quit when my bill got vetoed in Sacramento, and I put it back on the governor's table, and we got our $120 million for the last three years.
Mr. Viaragosa.
Yeah, I stand with Councilmember Garcetti. Members, there has been a great deal of criticism of this program over the years. This isn't going to be the first time this program has been criticized. And yet, from my vantage point, Councilmember Cárdenas said it about as well as you could say it, and that is that we're just not focusing enough on prevention, on intervention. We're not spending the resources. When you look at the public safety dollar, almost biggest percentage goes to the least effective, and that's prisons. Then, you know, cops on the street, and very little is going. Just a small few pennies are going to prevention intervention. I commend Councilmember Parks for having the foresight to increase this amount. And I'm hoping, as Councilmember Cárdenas has said, that we'll be able to identify even more resources for this. I do want to say a couple of things, however. We do have to understand that there have been criticisms in the past. We need to learn from that. I think there's a consensus here, at least I'm hearing, a great deal of support for this, but we're going to have to identify where the mistakes have been made and make improvements so that we're not subject to criticism, so that we're spending this money wisely. And while Councilmember Parks was correct in saying that we need to expand the pool of resources, we also need to address this issue of equity that's been raised. We absolutely have to focus these dollars in a way that all the communities are benefiting from them. So I thank Councilmember Parks and Garcetti, and especially Councilmember Cárdenas, who has played the leading role on this issue in the state. And I hope to work with all of you to ensure that we get at a minimum this million dollars and maybe even more.
Thank you, Mr. Viaragosa. As a member, it wishes to be heard on this item. No further requests. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
The item is approved. Thank you. Next item, please. Forthwith on item 38.
Still on the desk are the closed session items.
We also have a public comment here for today's meeting, an opportunity for members of the public to address the council on matters within our jurisdiction but not appearing on today's agenda. Council calls forward Larry Green. Melrose, Larry Green is back.
This is a public comment. This is really what I came down here for. First, let me apologize for my appearance. I ran here, you know, I'm a marathon runner. I don't know what the word gadfly means, but I'm not one, okay? I am a former candidate for office in this, I think it means a rebel, a freak. I'm not a freak. I have an Ivy League MBA from Cornell, graduated from a liberal university called Brandeis back in Boston, from my East Coast days. But the reason why I came here to talk is because, in many ways, you don't represent me around this horseshoe. Now, I like you as people. I said hello to Martin Ludlow before I came down here. I'm a friend of Tom Labonge, he's my constituent. But politically, you don't represent me. I'm Republican. I think there might be one Republican on this dais. I think it's Dennis Zine. But let me just tell you, I'm sick and tired of you in the city council blaming every problem in America on President Bush. And Janice, when you talk about the deficit of the war in Iraq, you should remember that the governor of this state has got a $38 billion deficit. And in today's L.A. Times, they indicate that the percentage of the deficit, even under $457 billion now, is lower than it was under Reagan in '86, and interest rates have never been lower. The reason we've got a deficit in this country right now is because Bill Clinton did nothing to fight Al Qaeda, to fight Iraq, and to fight North Korea for eight years. And rather than be bashing President Bush, you should be listening to me right now, and you should be leading a delegation to go to Washington to get money from George Bush to bail out the city of L.A. How many times did any of you go down to Washington to try to meet with President Bush? I give money to George Bush. I give money to George Bush. He's going to win big time next year. And I would love to know if the new members of the city council will go down with me to meet with George Bush. It doesn't matter if he's Republican or Democrat. I care about having programs for gangs in the city. That's why I talked about this. I've talked to Eric Garcetti when, okay, I'll be there with you. I'll wear a suit. I talked to Eric Garcetti when we were at the Ball Hope Star. I talked to you. I was at Chief Parks's granddaughter's funeral. You saw me there. You rolled down the window to your limo. My heart's with you and with your family. The problems have to be solved in this city. Whether you want to call me a gadfly, whether I wear a jogging suit or not, but make no mistake about it, George Bush is a good and honorable man. And you haven't seen me get mad yet. If you liberals insist on bashing George Bush and blaming every problem in America on George Bush, you're going to see what I did with O.J. Look Like Disney.
Thank you, Larry Green.
I like cops, and I like what you're doing, Parks, but I'm not a gadfly.
Thank you, Larry Green.
Thank God we have Antonio Villarreal on this dais. He'll be the first Hispanic-American president in this country, and you may be the vice president, Allison. Thank you.
This concludes public comments for today's meeting. Next item, please.
Council has motions for posting a referral.
Motion to have opposed and referred.
That clears the desk, Mr. President.
Okay, colleagues, we're getting ready to go into closed session. In accordance with California law, I would ask the guards to please clear the chambers.
And while we're still in open session, Mr. Parks has to recuse himself from items number 43 and 44, because he was a name defendant in those matters.
Okay. Welcome back, colleagues, to open session. We have items 43 and 44 before us. Right now, we have Mr. Parks's recusal, so let's take those in open session and approve the settlements verbally. All right? If we can, a verbal vote, colleagues, on item 43 and 44 together, or do we need to do them separately? Okay, 43 first.
There's a recommendation on item 43 to approve a settlement in the amount of $275,000 in the case entitled David Lozano versus LAPD.
Okay, please call the roll.
Cárdenas, Garcetti, Grul, Hahn, Labonge, Ludlow, Misakowski, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Smith, Viaragosa, Weiss, Zine, Padilla.
Colleagues who are new to the council, just if that's the first time you've experienced the oral vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Thank you for tabulating. An oral vote like that, we assume, as in our normal mechanical voting, that no response is a yes response for that. That item is approved. We can take item 44 with an oral vote, please.
On item 44, there's a recommendation to approve a settlement in the amount of $165,000 in the case entitled Florentino Lopez Lara versus Rafael Perez et al.
Please call the roll, Madam Clerk.
Cárdenas, Garcetti, Grul, Hahn, Labonge, Ludlow, Misakowski, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Smith, Viaragosa, Weiss, Zine, Padilla.
And tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
All right, that item is approved, colleagues. Now pause for Mr. Parks to return. And we'll finish up the meeting shortly. We'll have all of the closed session items go forthwith. We can take up the balance of the items now. Items 44, 46, 47, 49, I believe? Oh, no, we've done 44. So the remaining three?
On item...
Oh, do you want to take them separately? Okay, let's take the first one.
On item 46, there's a recommendation to approve an award of 80% permanent disability in the amount of $118,795, plus life pension thereafter of $77.31 a week in the case entitled Michael Long versus City of L.A.
Okay, please take the vote on that.
Cárdenas, Garcetti, Grul, Hahn, Labonge, Ludlow, Misakowski, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Smith, Viaragosa, Weiss, Zine, Padilla.
Thirteen eyes.
That is approved. Next item.
On item 47, there's a recommendation to accept an settlement in the amount of $5.2 million in outstanding business tax and utility user tax assessments against WorldCom Inc. and WorldCom Wireless.
All right, please call the roll on that.
Cárdenas, Garcetti, Grul, Hahn, Labonge, Ludlow, Misakowski, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Smith, Viaragosa, Weiss, Zine, Padilla.
Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
That item is approved. And I believe it was 14 for the previous one as well. Okay. And last item.
On item 49, there's a recommendation to approve a settlement in the amount of $1.2 million in the cases relative to the Cal compact landfill litigation.
Okay, please open the roll.
Cárdenas, Garcetti, Grul, Hahn, Labonge, Ludlow, Misakowski, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Smith, Viaragosa, Weiss, Zine, Padilla.
Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
Thank you. That item is approved. All those forthwith, please. All right, colleagues, that concludes the agenda. Now it's time for announcements. Any announcements, colleagues? Mr. Padilla.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Colleagues, two quick announcements. One, a clarification, because a couple of people have asked since we adopted this new committee structure when it goes into effect. So I think for simplicity reasons, if nothing else, we'll have that new committee structure go into effect when we announce the membership and chairmanships of those committees, which will be sometime next week. So I hope we're all on the same page there. The other, which is even more exciting and happier news, is that Angelino, who just happens to play baseball for a team down in Anaheim, they're starting left fielder Garrett Anderson, not only won the home run derby on Monday before the All-Star game, but was the MVP of the All-Star game yesterday, where the American League beat the National League, sadly, because Dodgers are a National League team. But one of Los Angeles' own Garrett Anderson was the MVP and secured, and secured home-field advantage for the World Series, because this time it counted, that All-Star game. So congratulations, Garrett Anderson. Let's see if we can't get him to come by and visit us here in City Hall.
All right, thank you very much. Mr. Padilla, any other announcements? Councilmember Hahn.
Thank you. I was going to wait and make this announcement on Friday, but sometimes it doesn't give people who are watching Channel 35 enough time to plan their weekends. This Saturday, down in San Pedro, we are taking the inaugural ride on the old red car. We're bringing it back into service. It will be used down on the waterfront in the harbor area. We actually have the original, one of the original cars, which we've stored, and we've also built a replica of the car. It's going to be a great, starts at 10:00 a.m. Saturday morning. Those of you old enough to remember riding on the red cars, you will enjoy coming down Saturday and revisit history by riding the historic red cars down in the harbor area along the port of Los Angeles.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn.
Make your plans.
Never heard of them before, neither has Mr. Padilla. Mr. Cárdenas.
Since we're going down memory lane, is it true, Mr. Padilla, that you actually pitched against Garrett Anderson? And how many home runs did he hit off of you?
You don't want to know. My neck is still hurting.
That was not properly agendized, so we'll wait on the answer to that. Any other announcements, colleagues? Announcements?
I just want to say, too, just a compliment, Ms. Hahn, for the red car. It's really something, if anyone has an opportunity to go down and see it and see what's happening at the waterfront, it's exciting. I took a test ride a couple of months ago, and I know, Ms. Hahn, you're going to salute Bob Henry from the port for his efforts to try to revitalize that, but it's very good. And also, I wanted to invite today's Wednesday, tomorrow's Thursday, at 6:30 tomorrow night in the upper merry-go-round parking lots, join with Louis Alvarado and the Sierra Club for a hike in Griffith Park. If you, believe it or not, members, over 400 people gather in the parking lots to walk the various hikes, whether they're the fastest, most experienced hikers, to a stroll through the various 4,212 acres of Griffith Park. And it's a fun thing to do. We're going to be there tomorrow night and invite anyone to come out and enjoy.
Super. Thank you very much, Mr. Labonge. Mr. Zine.
Tonight at Parkman Junior High School at 6:00 p.m., Mr. Romer and Marlene Cantor from the school board will be at the Woodland Hills Neighborhood Council, Woodland Hills Warner Center Neighborhood Council, discussing Oso School and Hughes School, which is very controversial for the southwest San Fernando Valley. It's going to be a special neighborhood council meeting, so we invite people of that district to participate. I will be there with my staff, and Mr. Romer will be there, along with Marlene Cantor, the elected representative for the school board, on those two issues, Oso and Hughes School. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Any other announcements, colleagues? If not, oh, Mr. Reyes.
I just wanted to offer to Councilman Zine, if a school is not wanted in that area, I'm welcome to add that school to my district. That'd be great.
It's not that they don't want the school, it's the type of school. Thank you.
Mr. Labonge, reconsideration of an announcement yesterday?
Your Echo Park announcement.
Oh, yeah, no, that's already entered in the record. It was closed session. We really can't reopen that. But we'd like, Mr. Reyes, would you like to?
First, I want to thank my colleagues for standing up for me. I appreciate that. I do want to acknowledge the fact that it was a vigorous race. Hopefully, I'll have the time to practice for two months to get ready for this. But my staff really fought hard. They raced vigorously as well. They were very strong at the end, but we're just a little short. But now it's two to one, and we'll have another year.
Absolutely. We're very proud of Echo Park's second team. All right, now, if all colleagues will still, will please rise for adjourning motions. And if we can have the entire chamber rise, too. Thank you. Adjourning motions, colleagues. Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Asked that we adjourn in memory of Carrie David Ayers Haynes, passed away at the age of 85 on Wednesday, July 2. She was born December 21, 1917, in Memphis, Tennessee. She received her bachelor's degree in English just prior to marrying Lucys Minor in 1937. For four years, she taught elementary school in Buffalo, New York. And in 1950, she and her family moved to Los Angeles, where she began teaching in the Los Angeles Unified School District in 1950. A year after the death of her husband in 1952, she remarried Theodore Haynes. And after 30 years of service with the L.A. Unified School District, she retired as an administrative consultant in 1980. She leaves her daughter Sally, also Carolyn, Thelma, and her son David, and a host of other relatives.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Councilmember Perry.
I want to adjourn in memory of Toshiko Yoshida, who was born and reared in Berkeley, California, but she had a rich and wonderful history in our city. She attended local Berkeley schools, attended the University of California at Berkeley, where she won the Wine Stock Family Prize, the Alpha Zeta Freshman Award, and was elected to the Phi Beta Kappa Society. During World War II, she and her husband Akira George and daughter Patricia were incarcerated at Tenforen Racetrack, that was used as an incarceration center for Japanese-Americans in Northern California. After a month, her husband was offered a job with the Office of War Information in Denver, and they lived there until 1945, when they were allowed to return to California. She re-enrolled to complete her degree at Cal, graduating in statistics in 1947. Upon graduation, she moved to Los Angeles to be with her husband and to begin her 32-year career with public health in Los Angeles. As a public health analyst, she worked on a variety of issues, ranging from analysis of disease data, birth and death statistics, and demography of the county. During this time, she volunteered her spare time to community affairs, especially in the Japanese and Little Tokyo community, including the Japanese-American Citizens League, the Asian-American Employees Association, which she helped to organize, and the Community Relations Conference of Southern California. Although active politically at the grassroots level, she was involved in local clubs that led to her election as a Democratic National Convention delegate from California to the New York Convention that nominated Jimmy Carter for president. Former councilman, and then at that time Senator Nate Holden, appointed her to the California Democratic State Central Committee. Mayor Tom Bradley appointed Toshiko to the Los Angeles City Human Relations Commission, first as an advisor and later as a commissioner, for which she held the office of president of Human Relations Commission, and was the Los Angeles representative to the statewide commission on the status of women. When she retired, she had time for her interests and pursued them with the same vigor she did with her volunteer and community work. She will be missed by her family, friends, and the entire city of Los Angeles. She is survived by her daughter Patricia, a returned Peace Corps volunteer and now program coordinator for Whirlwind Wheelchair International at San Francisco State University. She leaves two grandchildren, Deanna Orr of San Jose and Andrew Orr of Davis, California. She leaves two grandchildren, Deanna Ohr of San Jose and Andrew Ohr of Davis, California. Funeral services are pending this Saturday in Little Tokyo at Centenary Methodist Church 10:00 AM.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Perry. Any other adjourning motions, colleagues? If not, Mr. Clerk, if you please call the roll. Thank you. Thank you, colleagues. This meeting of the Los Angeles City Council is adjourned. Have a good day.